Call the meeting to order. Everybody, welcome. Thank you for coming. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wilson.
Mayor.
Councilmember Black.
Mayor.
Councilmember Derringer.
Mayor.
Mayor Proton Piper.
Mayor.
Mayor Mersch.
Here. Fledge of Allegiance. Jim, would you like to lead us?
Yeah.
Thanks.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're actually going to have a quick, I'm going to call it an announcement. Karina, would you like to make an announcement?
Madam Mayor, as I have shared with the City Council, that the city was seeking to fill their last vacancy of the administrative assistant position. And with us this evening, we have Ms. Serena Lopez, who recently joined our team. Now, you may have spoken to Ms. Serena over the phone over the last couple of months. She was here filling the capacity on a temporary basis under a different agency, and she went through the recruitment process, a quite competitive one. And we were really excited. We've got a solid group of candidates, but Ms. Serena definitely rose to the occasion, and we're really happy to have her now become officially a member of the City of Rolling Hills family. So she's here with this evening with her husband, her son, and her brother. So I wanted to actually bring her so that way. The community speaks with her all the time. It's always about something related to Republic Services, but they're always on the phone with her. But her customer service is amazing, friendly. You can hear her smiling through the other end of the phone. And I've heard nothing but positive feedback on Serena's professionalism, calm, cool, collected demeanor, but most importantly, she's really pleasant. So now she's here this evening.
Would you like to say a word, like hi, or? Very short, not put you on the spot.
Yes, it does.
I just want to say thank you so very much for this opportunity. I am so grateful to be picked out of so many qualified candidates, and I truly am so excited to see what the future holds here with this organization. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Well, if you'd be here for a long time.
Oh, I will be. I plan on it. If you keep me, I promise.
Welcome, and you should be very proud of her. Thank you for coming tonight.
So, Karina, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I know that you haven't been here that long, but is this the first time we've been fully staffed in, like, a long time?
And I know it's, we're not used to this. Get used to it.
That's the other day, we were in a meeting, and it was on a Friday, when even half of our staff is off. And he said, "There's so many people in the building."
And I said, "Yes, get used to it." My goal is to not have any revolving doors here, but we understand it does happen. But my goal is to make sure I fill those vacancies rather quickly. So Serena, welcome to the team.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, moving along to the next thing, approve order of the agenda. I would like to suggest that we move items 13A and B ahead of, excuse me, ahead of item 10, the commission items. We have, Robert's going to be here for both of them.
Thanks for coming, guys.
Thank you. Nice to meet you. Bye-bye.
Thanks for coming.
They were going to sit politely. I said, "You do not have to stay." We don't want to stay.
Would that be all right?
A requirement.
Do you want to make a motion? I'll second it.
Okay, that's okay. All right, we're going to do that. Okay, thank you. Blue folder items.
And make a motion we receive as presented.
Second.
File. You see in file? Yes.
On favor?
Aye.
Nobody opposed? No, no opposed? Okay, moving along. Public comment on non-agenda items. Kathleen?
Kathleen, you said 13 copy arrows.
Have a seat. Oh, okay, sure.
And I just wanted to ask the City Council what we are doing proactively about the slide. I listened very carefully to the town council meeting that RPV had. You know, I followed the slide. When we moved here, I was concerned about it. But what I was struck by in the RPV meeting is they have a massive amount of research. All these geologists, they're measuring constantly. And then this morning, I went to the press conference on the demolition of the Wayfarers Chapel, which of course is quite dramatic. And what they were saying is, "Look, the land is moving at nine inches per week. It has shifted dramatically since January." And I asked, like, "What do you think is going to happen?" Like, if it's moving nine inches per week, can it suddenly become something catastrophic? And they're basically saying, "We don't know." And when I listened to the geologists at the town hall, what they said is, "Look, it used to be 300 acres. Now it's 600 acres. We expect it to get bigger. We don't know how much bigger it's going to get." And this is incredibly, obviously, dramatic. And if we go back to 1986 in Rolling Hills, as we all remember, I think, there was the Flying Triangle, and they sued. And the issue was, should the city have taken preventative measures? Should the city have put the pipes above the land? And as you drive around now in Seaview, what's going on is they're, you know, they're lifting the pipes. And as I read through the settlement with Rolling Hills in 86, it said that Rolling Hills agreed to install what they're doing now, which is water wells, which drain the water out of the ground. However, those two were sheared because of the land movement. So when I look at this whole big picture, I think, okay, the city got sued because we weren't considered proactive, and then there was this dramatic slide, and then when we had a long period of drought, now they're attributing it mostly to the heavy rains. But there's a lot they clearly don't know. There was one other really important point I wanted to make. I mean, the speed of it at nine inches per week is obviously very dramatic. Oh, there are five separate, Leah's, you know, obviously working with the other cities, and we attended the Chamber of Commerce meeting together where the four mayors spoke. And she knows a lot more about this than I do, obviously. But what, the point they made today at the press conference for Wayfarers Chapel was that the slides are now one. They used to be considered five separate slides. They're moving so quickly that it's now just really one slide geologically. So my thought was, and I don't know, maybe we are doing this, they have so many people measuring, analyzing, they've tracked the history, they have charts. What are we doing?
I will defer to the, to Madam Mayor with the, with the one caveat that this will be likely a topic of closed session tonight. So, you know, keep that, keep that in mind. Obviously, we understand this is a, a big issue for us as well. We are monitoring it in a, in a way. Unfortunately, there's legal implications that we have to deal with, particularly threats of litigation. So that kind of hamstrings us somewhat in the way that we can be public with kind of our efforts.
There has been, obviously, there's a lot of finger pointing, the main culvert is the water, but there are plenty of people who think that the water is flowing down from the hill. So flowing from Rolling Hills down to RPV. And I sent Leah a story from the LA Times in 1986 that was talking about the triangle, and said, basically, if we don't do better with drainage, the Seaview area could eventually be affected. It wasn't affected at all. That was 1986. Now, there are 400 homes that are threatened, two that are red-tagged. They didn't red-tag the chapel, but as I went up there to the press release, one of the windows popped. You know, the glass is shattered. That's a big deal for the Wayfarers Chapel to be taken down. And it shows where we stand with this. I just had this feeling that for ethically, in terms of liability, in terms of common sense, that we need to be as proactive as we can, so that no one can look at us and say, "You guys up on the hill don't care. You're sending your, you have septic tanks, you're watering your garden." You know, as an ancient landslide, it, you know, obviously has a long history. There's been speculation that there are so many people living on this land, it's basically volcanic ash, and when it gets wet, it slides. But I think we should have a pretty good idea of what we're doing proactively before we're apologizing.
Well, and I will say, you've made a very critical point. When you said, "They've got so much data, they don't really know what is happening, what's doing," we are in a very similar situation. We can collect data. We're going to share data with them. They share data with us. You know, we're working together. I've told you, we have meetings. I meet with the mayor. But we are, we don't want to be taking our separate corners and doing the finger pointing as you were talking about. We don't have as much data as they do, because we don't have the same problem that they do. And we haven't had to be involved at the level that they have. But we will continue to work with them, work, especially with, you know, the sharing of data and what can be done. And if there are things that are incumbent upon us to do for Rolling Hills and our residents, we're going to do those things. But we're in the same evolution process as they are. This is new. We weren't having movement in the Flying Triangle until the rains. Again, we had been nothing. So we're getting a little bit of movement there. So we'll be looking at that, and we'll be sharing data with them. But it's not that we don't, aren't concerned, that we don't care. We care about not only Seaview, but we care about all the communities on the peninsula. So you and I can continue to talk, and as we have more developments that I can share with you, I would, I would be happy to do that. And we'll keep an open line of communication.
There's just one other point I want to make. They said that the water used to be 90 feet below the ground. It's now nine feet below the ground, and in some places, it was two feet below the ground.
Yeah, the statistics, if you're following it, are, you know, are mind-blowing. I mean, it is a significant change.
Right. But I think you've got to think of it as one landslide, one peninsula. Think of it as these different cities, and it's kind of their problem at some point.
I didn't, I didn't say it was their problem. I said, "We need to address from our, our city's perspective." And I think that's probably about all I can.
Correct. And I would just, I would just advise the rest of the council, it's not, this is a non-agendized item. So of course, we're here, we're not trying to not answer your question, but we don't want to build any consensus or say anything like that.
Right, right. So, but you can always reach out to me and share information. And I appreciate the research.
Having been at the Wayfarers Chapel thing this morning, it was quite shocking. I would love to stay for the rest, but I have a friend that, thank you for listening. It would be so much fun.
No.
Thank you, friend, for coming.
Thank you, Kathleen. Any other items not on the agenda? Okay, hearing none, I'm going to move to the consent calendar.
I have a, I want to pull a clarification or something on the bills. The number is 18, the bills?
Yeah. After a second.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so who wants to pull that one, the bills?
Yes, we want to do.
Yeah, I'll pull it.
I make a motion, we, or you have an own?
Yeah, and I would like to pull 8E.
I make a motion.
And I just, I just want to point out that there was a minor correction made to the minutes, so the minutes have been amended to reflect that change. So if you make a motion just with amended minutes.
I make a motion, we approve as presented 8A, B, C, and F, including the adjustment to the minutes.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay. So now we'll go to excluded consent. Do I need to ask for public comment?
Right, so, yeah, so Madam Mayor, we can, we can either go right to 8D and 8E, or I don't know if you wanted, guys wanted to take Robert first before then, but that's the council's discretion.
No, I'm going to take him right after, I'm going to, I was going to do this first, if that, if that's okay. Thank you, Robert. Okay, so 8D on the payment of bills, Pat?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions. One was Chung's roofing for Allen Bowie.
C and, is it a C and, it looks like a C and D.
That is, that is most likely a refund of their deposit.
It's a thousand? Is that the deposit amount?
For C and D.
I'm sorry, which one?
I thought it was a different amount than that.
It should be a thousand-dollar deposit, and then a hundred and some odd dollars for the, one fifty.
Okay, so is that what that is? A thousand dollars is a refund for the?
A thousand dollars is a refundable deposit, and a one fifty is a fee.
So that's what?
It says a thousand dollars here.
So it's, that's the refund of what they post for the C and D.
The other question is about paying fifty, almost fifty-three hundred dollars for cloud hosting? Seems like a lot. Second page, about a third of the way down, it's for forum info tech.
Yep, that's normal.
That's our monthly IT cost.
Well, IT is different from cloud, cloud hosting.
Everything is, all our IT is in the cloud. So I don't know if the description is different than usual, but that is forum info tech. Anytime you see that, that's our monthly IT.
Anything else on that one?
I make a motion we present. We do, see if there's public comment for 8D.
On that item? Hearing none.
I make a motion we approve as is presented, 8D.
Okay, all favor? Thank you. Any opposed? And this is very quickly on the Republic Services. I just want to note that this is the second month in a row, or the second report in a row, where they have not met the actual goal for diversion. And so I would like to ask staff to, as we're dealing with them on other issues, to add this in there one month, I can see happening, but not the second. Any problem with that? Could I make a motion, then, that we would have, oh, public, any public comment on this item? Hearing none. I'd like to make a motion to, excuse me, approve item E.
I'll second it.
Favor?
Second.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. All right. So we're going to, now, we're going to take out, I'm going to go to
13A.
13A, let me get to that. And Robert, so 13A, fiscal year 2024-25, proposed budget, report on finance committee recommendations.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. So here to present the expenditure budget for next year. So real quick introduction, you may recall, a few weeks ago, on April 22nd, we presented kind of an overview of the expenditure budget that was proposed by staff after a month or so of working on it. And as we do every year, you refer that to the finance committee for a more detailed discussion and for some recommendations back to council. So we did go back to the finance committee and last week on a special meeting on May 6th, and we're here to present to you their recommendations. So they had really two recommendations. One was, and this is kind of based on a suggestion, or, yeah, suggestion from staff, was to use monies that we have in our Section 115 trust, 115 trust for, that we have for pensions, to make our annual payment to PERS for what they call the UAL, or unfunded actuarial liability, at $63,217. So that will no longer show up in our budget, as it is the same case this year. And the other item was to reduce city council expense account, number 775. You may recall that in last year, we had $10,000 budgeted for that. And then this year, it was lowered to five, with the idea of $1,000 per council member. And just based on the expenses we've ever seen so far, we thought we were recommending that for next year, we bump it up to $7,500. And the committee recommended keeping it the same at $5,000. We had one item that was sort of a correction to what we had presented before, and that is that in the records management account, 891, we had proposed $1,700, and really should be $7,500 to provide sufficient funds for actual costs that we're incurring each year. Laser fish scanning, and then retention of consultant league review, those costs we're expecting next year. I think the laser fish is annual, but, so we really need $7,500 for next year. So this is kind of how we migrated from our preliminary to what we're now proposing as revised budget. Second to the last column, you'll see that the net of all those adjustments we just talked about was a reduction of cost of 59, almost $60,000. And as you can see, we move over to the right. We are, our numbers now are, reflect the balanced budget with a small surplus. And as I mentioned last time, the numbers could change, because we're still waiting on final numbers from revenues. I have a good sense of what our expenditures are going to be, but, but on the revenue side, we could be seeing addition, additional revenues coming in, and proposed for next year, or maybe a slight reduction. But I think for the most part, we are really balanced, and we're there. So I don't expect too much by way of change. So I think the next steps, so next steps, I mean, that's where I meant to mean, so next steps, we're going to be coming back to council in early June, and we hope that we, on that day, can adopt a budget, rather than waiting until the end of the month, June. Unless we see major direction and changes proposed by council, we think we can come back in early June and with all the resolutions to adopt the budget for next year. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions?
No.
This may not be for Robert, but in our blue newsletter, it says that we're going, today, we're going to have a city council budget workshop. Is this it? It wasn't real clear in this. I thought it might be a separate theme of some sort, like mini-meet, or, and it didn't say what time. It just made a very oblique reference to a budget workshop, so.
Yeah, it was brought to staff attention, and we spoke about it with staff, so we'll address it.
And then the other question I had, I guess for Christian, the SCAG meeting that I went to?
Yes.
Just recently, was that paid for by SCAG, or did that cost the city?
We, let's see, you pay for, we did your registration. I'd have to go back and check if there was, if there was a cost. I think, actually, no, I think for SCAG, the delegate actually goes for free for one day. That is, that is their.
So it would cost the city?
Yeah, if you had stayed for two days, then I think they would have billed us.
Thank you.
So I got to tell you that the budget committee, Jeff and I, we did very little this time, the first time ever. Karina, Christian, and Robert did this budget. It was very well done, and required very little input from us, and well done.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, and I wanted to raise the issue I, I mean.
Is this a question or an issue?
Let's, yeah, yeah, we'll do questions, and then public comment, and then come back, yeah.
Is it a question?
It's an issue.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, hearing none. Do we have any questions from the public on this issue? Hearing none. B, your issue.
Okay, no, I was just indicating that I know that they're asking for input on the recommendations that the finance committee made, but I would point out that when I joined council in 2013, the budget was $10,000, and it, the base.
What budget?
The budget for the, for the city council expense for conferences, sorry.
I didn't know which one you were referring to.
No, no, okay. Yeah, that's the one I was focusing on, because in the meantime, you know, inflation has hit all the costs of the conferences. But, so if anything, it should be at what it's been, and who knows what it, how long it was at $10,000 before 2013. But I can tell you of a surety that, that it was $10,000 up until the time that we were reducing everything by half. And that's how the, ended up going to the $5,000 level. But I think it should be realistically allowed for, if other people want to go, the costs have really risen. And it's just because they're passing on costs from hotels and so forth. And it's rare to have a totally free conference, because they normally do require people to pay. So that would be my recommendation to keep it at what it has been, at least, because it doesn't even reflect inflation.
I can comment on that. I was on the, so she's absolutely right.
Better you than me.
It was 10,000 total. It was 2,000 per member. And then if that member went above it, they didn't get any more. So if we want to go back to 10,000 at 2,000 per member, that's fine. But it's not like the extra money got distributed to other members. It was 2,000 per member, total of 10,000. We could do that if people wanted to.
Did they allow at that time, if, because a lot of people didn't go?
Never got spent.
Or if they, or if they went, they paid on their own? Did you?
Beyond their 2,000.
Did you allow them to say, "Godfrey, could I, if you're not going to go, can I use your 10?" It was just, it was just two grand?
2,000 per member. Use it or not use it. So we've now shifted so that individuals can actually take from the pot, whereas we couldn't before. It was 2,000 per member. And that is correct. The full 10 never got used.
And I, and I was the person doing all of the conferences at that time, from the beginning and so forth. But I do not remember anybody telling me that, what Councilmember Black just said about it being limited. Because I did, because I was going to, to the contract cities, to the league, to, and JPIA. So it, it did not end up being where anyone said, "Oh, you've gone over your 2,000," or anything. And it was, it was, I understood it, and in fact, I think it was said that, "Well, you know, just be careful on how you use it. Obviously, we don't want you to use just because it's there." And I said, "Oh, believe me, I don't. I'm very frugal with, with the cities, as I am with my own finances."
Well, I understand where you're coming from. You are very active in a lot of things, and you do go to a lot of these, more than any of the rest of us do. But what I will say is, I do remember a conversation that we had on this very issue last year, when we moved to this amount of money. And there was some specific discussion about staying within the budget. There was a specific discussion about if, you, you know how much, one, not you, we each know how much if we attend something, it costs. I don't ever recall that the discussion came up, "Well, just don't use the money just because it's there." We discussed that you had to be good. And if you looked like you were going to be going, and you didn't think some of the rest of the council was going to be going, and that the pot was still sitting there, you could take from the pot. But we had a discussion that said, "But you need to ask other council members, because they may be planning on going on something. So you want to make sure that in aggregate, we're not going over. There might be something coming up that I might want to go to, and I may not know that you may have already used everything." But we did have that discussion last time. We did it differently, apparently, in the old days. But when you're flush with money, some of the things like that don't become a big deal. When you're kind of counting your pennies a little bit, it becomes more of a big deal. So anybody else have any comments on this?
I wanted to, there was a discussion, I know when we were talking about it, I remember Councilmember Piper saying, when I was saying, you know, "This is really not realistic, because right now, the costs are going, are really at this level." And I remember Councilmember Piper said, "Well, don't worry about it. I mean, if there's, it's going to cost more, just come back, because we'll, we can adjust it. But right now, we want to keep it at this level." And I said, "Okay, as long as that, that's understood." Because I knew it was going to be higher than that, because things were increasing. I'd seen it increase.
But, Robert, we were at 5,000 last year, too, right? You were at 5,000, and then you guys wanted to change it to 7,500, and we said, "No, leave it at 5,000."
So let's make sure we're talking about the right fiscal year. So fiscal year 22, '23, we were at 10. It was lowered to 20, to $5,000 in the year we're in today, because of the budget constraints. And so it's, today, it's at 5,000. Question is, what should it be next year?
So we used to be at 10, under, whether, no matter how it was ran or structured, because part of what has been cleaned up is the accounting sloppiness is no longer here. So if, if was, if Robert was in charge today, and we were doing it the way it was when we had $10,000, there'd be five line items, one for you, one for me, one, everyone had their own line item, because that's what was the intent. Whether it happened that way or not, I have no idea, because it really didn't happen that way. So we switched to a bucket now that has $5,000. Did you not go to something you wanted to go to? Did you not go to something you wanted to go to last year?
Well, there's always, I mean, there's.
I know there's always more, but in general.
I try to go back to things that are really important.
So, so you were able to attend within what this looks like, so if we, if this is, if we get there, and you're toward the end, as long as someone's not planning on something that they think they're going to, or we make sure, whatever, we should be talking to each other regarding these, is if we run out of money, then we'll talk about whether we want to do these things. So, all this is, is a budget line item. For me, I struggle with the value that some of these things bring, right? That's just me. You go, you think there's value in these things that bring it back, then you go. So, having the same budget as last year, when we are not in great financial state, we just leave things where we were, which is basically what we did across the board on everything else. If we run out of money, you can come back, and then we'll vote. Yeah, you can go, or no, you can't. Well, it depends on where the budget's going to be.
Well, I mean, all I'm saying is that this is what the discussion was, and it should be consistent with what, these costs are increasing, I can show you this, I was trying to bring some information.
I understand that, but what I'm saying here is, we have yet to run up against the number, it has yet to be a problem. So it was five thousand dollars last year, and you were able to attend everything you wanted to go to, so why don't we just leave it at the same, and if it becomes a problem, then bring back, hey, I was able to go these two or these three things, and I want to go to this one more, because I think it's really important, then it's going to be this much over the budget, and we'll talk about it, we either vote yes or no, and move on. But it hasn't been a problem yet.
And?
So, just, again, last year, this year, so in fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, when we had ten thousand, I don't recall whether we exceeded that number or not, I think we came pretty close. This year, twenty-three, twenty-four, where we have five thousand dollars budgeted, we will well be, will be exceeding that, maybe even approaching ten thousand this year.
So that's too many conferences.
So, what I'm saying is that the five thousand dollar idea this year is, is not going to be reflective of what actual costs, and, you know, maybe Christian has more details on what we're going to spend this year.
Okay, so when we go over budget, are you telling us that we're going over budget?
Yeah, because I didn't know that.
Yeah, I think, you know, I think we show you, I mean, we show you mid-year and third quarter, those kind of information, and we show what the projections are. Yeah.
But we may not have been looking down at that, you know, at that level, maybe they were more aggregate, I mean.
Yeah.
And I realize that the task here tonight is not this year's budget and what's happening, but it's about what we would be approving for next year's budget, is that, am I correct in that?
So, it's for next year's budget, so then, maybe, why don't we do this, is, I think we should be along where we're at. Two, is if this is a problem, then why don't we have a, a meeting, or an agenda item, that is, look at the scheduled ones you want to go to, look at the scheduled ones I want to go to, everyone look at the scheduled ones, and pencil out what we think this is, and we'll talk about that, and what, what actual value this is bringing to the community, and see whether we want to spend money that we sort of have right now, which we really don't. We're about to spend a whole bunch of money on a whole bunch of things that are going to eat through all our, a lot of reserve money. So, I think that's what we do, is we just leave it alone on the budget, if we need to change it, and maybe what we need is, I don't know if it's quarterly, I don't know what it is, if it's easy for the accounting, because the problem is, we're not linear. So, because nothing's linear, our revenue's in versus our budget's out, nothing goes in a nice, smooth line, but it, maybe we, if you could think about how you could show us, the items that are not on track would be beneficial.
And, yeah, and I, you know, we could always do better, but when I present to you the first quarter, mid-year, third quarter report, that, that's the purpose of that, is to show you kind of how we're tracking, and expenditures are, for the most part, you know, generally speaking, are linear, but not all of them, some are seasonal, of course. Now, it's also key, important to remember that there is no policy that says, thou shall not spend over your budget at a line item level, it's at a department level, right? So, so we don't really look at individual line items and say, hey, we got a problem here, we look at mostly the aggregate, but we present the information to you in these quarterly reports, so you can kind of see for yourselves where we're maybe looking, you know, going to be overspending at a line item level, but there's nothing that, from a policy perspective, that prevents anybody from exceeding a line item budget. If there is, if you want to implement a policy that says, for certain line items, we want to make sure we're not spending over at the line item level, for whatever reason, we can, you know, we can comply with that, and we make sure we're reporting to you as timely as we can.
But, Robert, then why do we have budget adjustments? If there's nothing to prevent overspending?
Yeah, there's, there's never a budget adjustment, or rarely a budget adjustment that's moving money from one account to another, or adds to a line item. The budget adjustments are really like, we, with a new contract, and we have a new expenditure that's coming in because a contract was approved, or a new project is coming online, but we really don't do line item adjustments, because we're overspending in one account, we look at the department, and then at the fund level, and if we're, as long as we are underspent at those levels, we're okay, we're not going to amend the budget. We may want to move money up and down, because we have some salary savings, and we want to spend something on a one-time basis, but we don't really.
But you're saying that the quarterly, and semi-annually, and third quarter, that's our opportunity to.
Yeah, yeah.
To go over the.
Yes, and what I pay attention to, are we, how are we doing at a department level, and of course, at the fund level, and if I think we're going to be under at that level, I'm, I'm not going to raise, you know, an alarm at all, but I present to you the details of line items for you to look at, and for you have, if you may have a particular interest in some line items, for you to look at and say, hey, you know, this is, this is maybe a problem. I identify big dollars for sure, but not the little stuff.
That's what I was going to say, when you do that, we're getting pretty broad groupings, so.
Yeah.
You know, the, the council member allocation, that probably wasn't.
Yeah.
You probably didn't see that individually compared to, you know, administrative fees or something like that.
But, you know, what comes to my attention are big dollar amounts that could, yeah.
But we're talking about small dollars right now.
Yeah, and the small dollars.
And we, we may have necessarily seen exceed the budget.
Right, yeah, yeah, I mean, if I, yeah, if I'm, I'm going to be presenting the third quarter, so mid-year, I think we're okay, but the third quarter, I think, when, is the first time that I would have noticed, as I put those numbers together recently, that in this particular line item, we're going to be exceeding budget, and.
When do you do third quarter? When's that coming?
It's going to be coming, hopefully, the first, same, same time we bring the budget in June. If not, we can bring it, bring it.
Eleventh? June tenth.
Yeah, June tenth.
So the next meeting, because we don't have one for then, we're going to see what the third quarter is, so, here's kind of where I'm at, because this is the only thing I belong to, that I don't look at the numbers two times a week on every single line item. Every company I have, I look at everything all the time, I log on, it's over here in the corner, because I'm crazy, like, so I can see it all, all the time. And so, this is kind of weird that, for me, that I just get it once a corner, and it's not, and kind of with a flow to it. So maybe, from my standpoint here, I would like to do is go forward what we just did, understand that you don't like it, and let's look at how it comes in the third quarter, and see if, one, we've been ignoring what you're saying is there, because when we did the budget meeting, and the line items were the way the line items were, in my interpretation on how my mind wants to remember, it was the first time I was like, and they're all here. That's the, it was sort of the first time I, they might have been there the whole time, you've been doing them this way, but it was really the first time I was like, when I looked through it, I was like, okay, I feel like I'm getting all the information now, what that looks like. So, I could just be glazing over it, because it's the third quarter, and it's not, we're close, and you say we're on the less schedule, so we're close enough.
Yeah, yeah, and it, it's not part of the third quarter officially, but when we presented the budget to you on the twenty-second for next year, I provided to you columns that showed what the current year adopted budget was, and what the year-to-date expenditures were through March thirty-first, at a line item level. Every single line item was identified. I may have only highlighted big dollar amounts, but I, I wouldn't, you know, but every single line item was represented, and so you had an opportunity, all of us had an opportunity to see how we were doing through the nine months of the year, and I think there you would have seen that, where I think at five thousand dollars budget, we're about sixty-five hundred dollars expended on this particular account.
And if I may, I think in Robert's materials, he always also includes an amended budget, so for the one-time budget amendments that we do throughout the year, those will be reflected in that.
Yeah.
Column.
Any other comments?
I think that's just too much money for conferences, I think this city needs zero benefit from people going to all these different conferences, zero. And if you look who's spent it, I haven't spent my two thousand in, what, fifteen years? I mean, Jeff, you ever spent yours?
Never.
Most of us, and we're, we're talking about one person getting, go to a lot of conferences, and I don't think it's helpful for the residents, period.
Pat, any comments? I would, I agree with Jeff, I would like to leave it at the five thousand dollars. I think that this is something that, as we move towards next year, this is a, kind of a philosophical type of thing, it's not a regular, it's not a lot of money that we're talking about, but I think it may be something that the council has some feelings about how we should be administering this particular thing, this is our, within our control. I think that perhaps we need to do a better job of, without spending a lot of time, but in, if something is picked up in these meetings that is beneficial in sharing it with the council, so that they understand that we go to this particular meeting because it's beneficial, and maybe saying what the benefits are. So that would be my recommendation. So does anybody have a motion?
Well, I would like to be able to add to the items that we just said, as Jeff mentioned it, you mentioned too about, about the value, and so did Dr. Black. So, I have, in different times, when I've come back from conferences, I started talking about it, but because it comes up in city council matters at the end of our meetings, the reaction I had gotten was like, okay, okay, and, and so I had to, like, all right, well, I guess, I said, well, there's on the online, you can see all the different courses and the, and the, and the PowerPoints with regard to it, but I don't, but I end up learning a lot that I bring back to this council, I don't highlight it and say, I learned this at this conference, but I can do that, but I, I felt that there was not an interest in when I did share, so that's why I was trying to keep the meeting short and not mention that.
And I did think I said at, somewhere in my little thing, I, I think I did say something about, you know, without having to take a long, a long time on it, because, you know, we don't need to hear everything that's, that's learned, but I think that you are involved in a lot, and I think that's great, and I'm sure that some of it is helpful to us, but there's budget issues right now, and I think there's also, we're not even, we're talking about maybe being, you know, at ten thousand dollars, when we've got all these other little things, well, we're going to be over, over here or something, so, does anybody have a motion that we can make to get out of this?
I make a motion we approve as presented.
Are we talking about the whole budget, or just that?
Just that anyone brought? Yeah, it's not really yet.
It was the question, the questions and discussion, and then we are, I believe what we're supposed to do is receive, consider, and provide direction to staff regarding Finance Committee's recommended adjustments to the proposed fiscal year. So the adjustments, I believe, are this, the issue on the council members' conferences.
If that was the motion to cover the, these recommendations.
All right.
Yeah, three recommendations, really, the two from the committee and one from staff. This, these two from the committee, and then this one from staff.
Important, the unfunded liabilities to use our other account to pay that.
Right.
Yeah, right. So those three things. Okay, so we've got a motion and a second, let's take a roll call on this one, please.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Black?
Yes.
Councilmember Derringer?
No.
Mayor Pro Tem Piper?
Yes.
And Mayor Murch.
Yes.
Thank you, Robert, okay. And the next item, but don't go away if you don't mind, don't, don't head for home just yet, we're going to, on this next one.
You want him to say?
Yeah, if you don't mind, just, just quickly, this next one is the tax, the tax deductible. I think, we'll go, this should be very quick.
One seventy, C.
Consideration, this is item thirteen B, consideration and possible action to proceed with IRS Code Section one seventy C one for charitable contributions used for public purposes.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This item is coming back to you tonight, based on your direction from the meeting in February, where we discussed the possibility of creating some type of charitable contribution entity. You discussed at that time the possibility of a five oh one C three, or, as the mayor had brought up, the Section one seventy C one from the Internal Revenue Code. Your direction was for us to come back with more information on the one seventy C one, hopefully, within your staff report, I laid it out as a question and answer, trying to cover most of the things that came up in the discussion, or concerns. Really, to drill down to this in the most simplest form, the beauty of this section of the tax code is that it precludes us from having to do anything special, much in the way that a five oh one C three requires. We do not need to form a formal board, we do not, we don't need to file formal paperwork. We, as a government entity, are actually able to accept donations, as long as those monies are put to the use specifically for public purposes, and, so, any contribution from a resident, even if they have a specific thing they want to contribute to, be it emergency preparedness, maybe, you know, the building, or the tennis courts, whichever, as long as we direct that towards a public purpose, it is a charitable contribution that is deductible at a fifty percent rate by the resident. Is there a question?
Yeah, so if I say I want to donate fifty thousand dollars towards the tennis courts, and then the tennis courts never happen, one, do we give the money back, or two, can we redirect it, or, and can we mess them up when that happens?
So that would really depend on the, what would, in that instance, for that level of amount of money, what the donation agreement says, so some.
So there's going to be an agreement, so it says, if this never happens, I want my money back, or it says, and if that doesn't happen, I'm happy for it to buy the generator.
Correct, yes, and so, yes, for, for, as I said, for, for amount of that, of that stature, yes, we would insist on a donation agreement for those very things, arguably, if someone were to, yeah.
So, all right.
I think that's why the, the staff and the city attorney is recommending that we come up with a formal gift and donation policy. That would really spell out any questions that you might be asking now.
Is, I've seen this with nonprofits before, but when you, when the donor, when it's a donor-specified amount, sometimes there's a minimum amount, because if somebody says, I'm going to give the city two hundred and fifty dollars, and it has to be used for, you know, it gets cumbersome to even receive that gift if it's so specific that it can only be used for that, and say it's not enough money for a, a generator, but it can only be used for the generator, it's, I, I would just keep that in mind as you come up with this policy, that there may be a minimum commitment level, otherwise, you take a donation, but you can't be bound to, to use it as directed.
And there is a draft policy in the staff report, which clearly the council is, has the ability to comment on and add, you know, specific direction for us to modify and bring back to you in a more formal setting.
Any other questions? Here, Matt, I'd like to open this to public, Mr. Ackley.
Democrat, resident, I'd like to just clarify, I was reading this saying, keep referring to public. Now, I can understand donation for generators being used for a public building, but I think donating money for the tennis courts, which are used into a private entity, how do you say that's for public use, because the public's not allowed to it, it's a private group that's allowed to it, that's what worries me, I read these things, it says, it's for public use, or public this, and very few things in this city are actually open to the public.
And we're aware of that, and it, it is very clear, it will very clearly be stated that it has to be something that the city council would be spending money on for public purposes. Any other questions? Hearing none, I close, bring back to the council our wishes, discussion?
I have some comments on the proposed policy, because there's some, and so I did discuss this with the city attorney, there is, and a decision that the city council needs to make regarding the value that the city manager can accept for a gift, for vis a vis, have to come back to the council for approval, so I think that's something that we should probably discuss as part of this particular item, since it's agendized, and then, there's also a time period within which, and I discussed with the city attorney some language adjustments, which I think he was agreeable to, but they're not in the, in the, written here, but just to clarify it, but one of those is, if we have a particular, like, it's a six months prior to the date that the gift was provided, then that would be the time period for a discon- date that the gift was provided, then that would be the time period for discretionary approval, that, that a person should not be making that, a gift, that type of thing.
Right, and Madam Mayor, if I may, so just kind of, at least, out of the holistic discussion, two specific pieces of information myself and Mr. Horgath are looking for. One is, of course, that amount for which you guys feel comfortable letting city manager have the discretion to. She can always bring back a lower one if she feels that appropriate, but that would really be the shall, that any, any gift above that amount must come to you, i.e., the city cannot accept it unless you all take action. And then, of course, the, the, the second paragraph of that is not legally required. It is probably good practice to avoid the appearance of impropriety, i.e., someone getting an entitlement and then showing up the next day and saying, thank you, the city, we love you guys so much, here's $5,000. And so that is why we basically put that in there, and, and, and that amount of time is really up to you all basically saying, from whenever you get an entitlement, we're not going to accept a gift for X amount of months. That is really up, up to you all, however you, you feel is, is appropriate. I've seen ranges from as low as three months, probably better six months, and then all the way extending to 18 months, which is a year and a half, which is kind of a lot, but that's an entire judgment policy call. To reiterate, I don't think you guys need to make the final decision right now, just provide us some direction, and we will come back with a more detailed, dialed-in policy for you guys to continue to tweak.
Thank you. Pat?
So I think up till now, we've been talking about cash gifts?
Correct.
I think we need to be really careful about taking something other than cash, like real estate.
Well, yeah, so, yeah, so, so, so real estate is an entirely different process.
Our, the draft policy is only cash.
Or, or it, it would be, and, and the example I did use with Councilmember Derringer, is if, say, someone said, hey, I, you know, have a bunch of chairs that I would like to donate, because these chairs are not very comfortable. You are right, that could get complicated. Are they used? And so that is something to, to kind of consider. Obviously, cash is easiest to value, because, yeah, I won't-
Cash, is it cash or cash equivalent, like stocks and stuff like that?
Cash, services, or personal property?
It says personal property?
Correct.
Personal property.
Yeah, personal property, yeah.
But still, sometimes you don't want to get someone else's problem.
And once again, so this won't be a, this will not be a goodwill store, that people just come and drop off and say, hey, I got an old computer, I don't want it anymore. That's-
Water heaters.
Yeah, that's not, that's not the thing. However, but I mean, there, sometimes there, I mean, looking around the, I'm not sure, the, these paintings, if we, if we've purchased them? I don't believe we did, but I could be wrong.
They were donated.
So they're donated, so there could be some, you know, utility in that.
Jim, any comments? Jeff?
I didn't, yeah, finish out, but I was going to say also, I think it would be good to make clear that this policy applies to any gifts made after the effective date of this policy. So we're going to have people coming in and saying, well, I made a gift, and I want- and then the other one is, I think it would be helpful, in, in the line of avoiding, avoiding the appearance of impropriety, that we just put it out there and saying, make a statement in the policy saying that any donations made to the city do not entitle a resident to any greater benefits than the benefits provided any other city resident, that it's, that it's just stating the obvious, because we have some people that beckon in situations where this is sort of expected, that you give things to government, you know, and-
I understand where you're coming from. I like the suggestion, what was your, the, the first one?
Make clear the policy applies to gifts made after-
It's not retroactive, I, I agree with that. I personally think that the, in the draft, where it says to avoid the appearance of impropriety, I'm, I personally, I don't know about the rest of the council, I personally am fine with that, without having to spell out, as you were saying, that this doesn't entitle to you. I think that implies to that. And I know in the draft, there is the, excuse me, in the last paragraph on page 150, the city does not provide legal accounting tax or other such advice to donors, da-da-da-da. I'd like to see a bigger disclaimer in there. We are not your tax consultants, talk to your financial professional or something like that, just a disclaimer, whether it goes at the bottom, and it is in a different color and italics or whatever, but just so that that, I would make that recommendation, because we don't want people coming to us and saying, well, I, I deducted the whole, well, they can't deduct the whole thing, because we are going to have to send, we will have to provide a letter, is, and the reason I wanted you to stay, Robert, is, is, do you think this is going to be onerous on, on your team? I mean, I don't know how much of these we're going to be getting, quite frankly, but-
Yeah, I'm not sure it's going to be onerous. I think somebody should be the owner of this program, and what I mean by that is that, like, for example, you know, we track, not in our, in our cutting records, but separately, all the C and D permits. We just had a refund, so, like, John and his staff, track all of those at a separate system. So we should be looking at a separate system that tracks all these individual donations, because, you know, we're dealing with, you know, with a lot of numbers, and we're not going to want to create an account in our books for every single donation, that'd be too cumbersome. But we can certainly track all of them in totality with somebody tracking the details of them.
As we would go forward on this, because this is just, this is just a draft, and it needs to have some more things worked on it, but we would work with you, because this is what we would have for our policies, but administratively, behind that, behind the policies is how we would make it happen, and so we could work with you on that and come out with how the best way-
Yeah.
-to do that would be.
For sure, and that's an important consideration and discussion, yeah.
How is this looking? Would this have any budget impact?
No.
Okay, so it would be like a balance sheet type?
It's exactly right. We'll track those as a liability, you know, to deposit liability, and then we'll apply those into whatever projects, and then at that point, we'll reflect them as expenditures when they're spent.
And then the last question I had, if we were talking about something like, and I'm not going to use the tennis court in as example, let's say that somebody wanted to do the backup generator, because we know that's something for the, the building here. But it takes us, or they wanted to help us with the ADA in this building, something that was definitely, you know, on, on the campus. If we tried to set up something that says, don't give us the money too far in advance, in other words, the issue about if it, wait, if it doesn't happen, are we going to refund it? How long could we say that it, I think we would have to have some stipulation in there that if the project hasn't happened?
If I, if I write you guys a check for $50,000-
Right.
-you're going to give me a piece of paper that says, thank you for your donation of $50,000, here's our stamp that we're, blah, blah, blah. I'm handing it to my guy, I'm writing it off. If you didn't give me that money back in three years from now, I got a taxation train wreck-
I know you do.
-coming at me. So we cannot give the money back, it needs to say, and our plan is to use this after X amount of years-
That.
And, and, asterisk, asterisk, and if that project does not happen within the lifespan of the average person in the Lane Hills, we will move on to some, some, because we can't give the money back once we get it.
That, that's why I'm saying that we would have some type of thing, that the project has to be substantially approved and going forward before you take the money, so that you know, especially if you're talking about large amounts.
I think we just, to make this the easiest way possible, we say, we're going to do our best we possibly can to spend it on what you asked for. However, if that project doesn't happen in any sort of timely manner, we might use it for something else.
And I, and I think it'd be up to the donor to decide whether, when they donate it. If, if they really want to make sure it gets spent on a particular project, they would, they in themselves would probably want to donate closer to that project to see that's really going to come to fruition. But otherwise, they're going to have to agree that it could be used for other purposes, and that's up to them to decide when then to donate it.
And I, and I think we need a thing at the bottom, that this policy is subject to change at any time, and then once we get the, I mean, like, to get new chairs in here, I mean, if you're going to use that as an example, the amount of office chairs that are sitting out there in the world, that are just sitting there, someone's going to like, hey, I own three floors of this building, no one's been here in a long time, let me drag those in here, and they're, and when I bought them, they were two grand each. And we're going to be like, well, they're technically used, because as we've seen in the news in maybe New York, the owners always believe there's a value here, and that government sometimes-
There's a lot of information in here about how, how that would come out with it.
Right.
I, I think we will be able, we'll be able to do that. We, we will tell them what we think it's worth, and they can choose to give it to us or not, based on the amount that we say we think it's worth.
And it's an estimate.
To all the offices, to look at the furniture.
Is there one more suggestion?
Yes, please.
And I think I maybe mentioned this in the staff, or made an amendment to the staff report, but always being careful to say that it's a tax, these things will be tax deductible, because they may or may not be, small deductions or charitable contributions are generally not deductible unless you, unless you have itemized deductions that exceed the standard allowance.
Right.
So it may or may not be, as long as it's, you know, properly qualified that way.
It does say in here that it does specify that, obviously, in order for it to be tax deductible, you have to itemize. So that, that is, that is included in the draft. So I think we need to give direction tonight to staff, what we would like, before we do that, even before we say what the city manager can approve, I would like to suggest that we have a minimum amount in general for somebody to make a charitable donation. Yes, no?
Well, I, I would just say, because the thing that jogs my memory, and I'll defer to Madam City Manager, I think during the holidays, people come and drop off gift baskets, so I want to make sure, is that the process, or instead, the person who shows up and says, give me that form that says, I've, I've donated X dollars to the, to the, to the city?
Well, because, when you go to Salvation Army, you bring a carload of god knows what. You then, they hand you a stamped with the date on it receipt. There's no words on it, there's no nothing, they don't count, they don't nothing it, and then they hand you that, and you leave. Then you are supposed to write down what those things are, and then put down what the fair market, market value is, what that's supposed to be, and survive your own audit. They do not vouch for anything. So we, in my mind, are doing the same thing, but I think you need a minimum, so people aren't bringing fruit baskets in here saying, give me my receipt, but-
Got it, so, once again, I was just trying to draw that line of demarcation, so staff can, we still want to be neighborly and hospitable, we'll still accept that fruit basket, we just will not give you that receipt that says, got it, okay.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, so do we want to have a minimum?
250 bucks. I was thinking a thousand, but-
When you're thinking about this, I think-
Going, going, sold American.
Whether, you know, because there's going to be a difference, a substantial difference between something where somebody's restricting the use of those funds versus just a general donation.
Well, that's, that's what I was talking about earlier.
Yeah, and so I think if you're just accepting general donation money, you know, maybe a minimum of, but it's the big dollars for, for, I'm sorry, for dollars that are restricted, I think that's where the minimum really becomes more, more appropriate.
Right, so we could have two.
So, I'm going to just reset what you just said, is, we're going to take any money above a certain minimum threshold for paperwork, and then once it gets above two grand, five grand, 10 grand, 20 grand, whatever that number is, and then it requires a document that has an agreement, then it has to be enough money to make it worthwhile. But we, if anyone wants to hand us a thousand bucks, we just take a thousand bucks, right?
Yes. I'm just saying that the minimum amount you want to kind of deal with, I think, when you have a restriction on it, that is, becomes more administratively cumbersome for us, and I think therefore, do you want to take a hundred dollar donation that's going to be restricted for our tennis court? You know, I think you want to think about minimums for those kinds of things that are restricted to you versus a general donation for any public purpose. You may not want to have a really, you know, your minimum could be much lower, I think.
So I, so I'm going to go with all the different pieces here. So we have, the minimum you can give us is 250 bucks, just for anything, to give you your piece of paper, just to keep people from getting $10. $250.
Well, we were back and forth.
No, no, what I'm saying, two different pieces.
Not restricted.
Non-restricted, 250 bucks, and you can't tell us what it's for. You're giving it for projects that are for the community, that are public. Okay? Then, when we hit $10,000 and above, then you can restrict what it's for, as in you can say, this is for planting, or redoing the driveway, or whatever these, whatever these things could be.
And we still have, well, my friends would probably say a thousand, not 10,000.
First of all, we have same friends.
So, can we just get, do you have, were you going to weigh in on the amount?
I was going to try.
Okay, then it's me.
Okay, I know, I know, I'm just trying to, you know, appropriately, I think it, it probably could be 5,000 for the restricted. Is that, is that going to be too much paperwork for 5,000?
Okay, but it's kind, I think it's a two-step process, it's a minimum amount, but also we have to agree to, to that. If they give us $5,000 to, you know, for some project that we're not even contemplating, that we're really not interested in, we don't want to just take the 5,000, and now what do we do? You know, it's something that we had never, you know, I'm trying to think of something.
So if we're going to put pavers instead of asphalt around the whole entire city, which we weren't planning on doing, we had no intention of doing, and someone comes in here and says, I'm going to give you 50, $20,000 to do this, and it's a $100,000 project, so we're not going to then try to find the other money to, it's kind of like a grant, these are grants-
We need to agree to it.
That it makes sense. So, or they can give it to us to any amount, as long as it's not restricted.
Right.
And then in here, we never tell them what anything's worth. Like, we were saying about the chairs, and how we were going to find what the chairs were.
Right.
We will say, thank you for your chairs, here's your piece of paper, bye.
Okay, and, and so I will say, the, the, the policy as drafted says, we, we do not provide it. Upon request, we will give you one, however, that, that is final.
Yeah.
And so, so whatever we say, there's no appeal period, there's no, you guys undervalued it, you need to, but that's a policy decision for you all, so if you want nothing to do with that, and we provide no, no appraisal whatsoever, that's entirely appropriate, too.
Or we don't have to take personal property. We have the option, you can, you can just take cash, if you want.
Okay, but if someone's going to give us a bunch of chairs, there's two options. Like, I just went through, because my parents passed away, donating tons of stuff all over the place, every single item I donated had to be appraised.
Right.
No matter the value, and it took years.
We would have some, like the city attorney said-
So if someone wants to bring it in and say, Bob's furniture said, this is worth, on the used market, $3,000, we hand them their piece of paper, he takes his $3,000, staples it to our thank you for your donation, and it's his problem. Nobody said, thank you for your donation of $413,000 for these valuable items. No one gave me any of that. They just said, thank you for your donation of these items, and then I wrote the piece of paper with the appraisals, handed it to tax guys, and then wait three years, and we get audited.
Okay, well, there's a lot in here. If you would let us to not belabor this, this evening, to take a, a look at that, whether, whether we can do it that way or not, and we'll come back when we get the more information.
I think when you're doing it, it needs to be the least amount of impact on staff.
Right, right.
Whatever that means, and if it means we don't get some free chairs, then we don't get some free chairs. But my guess is, we can get some free chairs, and we just give them a piece of paper that says, yeah.
Yeah. And so we'll, we'll look and see if they, we can do that. We have some slightly different requirements, I think, when I was reading this, than, let's say, the Salvation Army might do.
And I would indicate, if we're going to be restricted, then that means it has to come to city council, and that means that's going to be de facto the amount that's different between, if it's restricted, what the city manager can approve versus the city council, because we're going to have to approve the restrictions.
I, I agree, if it's restricted, it has to come here, whatever that amount, we decide, but we're going to have to see how this rolls, because we might want to be, thank you so much, are we right, are we right, I sent everybody a thank you note, I don't know what we do. I mean, Ted Lou gave us a million bucks, we send him a thank you, right?
So we're, I think we're making this harder than, than it needs to be right now. So, can we get, do we want a minimum for the non-restricted account?
Good, so I, I heard two, I heard $250, I believe that was-
Well, we heard a couple things, 250.
And, and that, that would be, with or without a receipt?
No, that, that, that would be the minimum for which we, we, we provide that. So if someone comes in and tries to give Madam City Manager $100, she says, you're not getting a receipt, if they try to give her 250, she will say, thank you, here's your receipt.
Okay.
So take it.
Yeah.
So, 250, is 250 a consensus on that? I mean, are we being cavalier, if somebody wanted to give us a hundred?
For when a receipt will be issued.
Correct.
Yes.
Minimum for collecting cash- Minimum for collecting cash that's unrestricted is the minimum for when we issue a receipt.
Yes, when it applies for the tax.
Our staff should be taking money without giving a receipt, though.
No, it, but it's a form. It's this formal form. Yeah, they'll get a normal receipt.
Tax exempt status.
Hold on a second.
I thought this was going to be so quick.
Is, if we're just handing out a thing that said, "Thank you for your $10. Thank you for your 250 dollars," that if there's a blank space, "Thank you for this much cash," and we hand it to them, it's pre-printed, it's ready to go, we say that, we write the date, their name on it, or whatever that is. It shouldn't matter how much money it is because now we're going to take money without a receipt. We shouldn't be doing that. If someone wants to hand us $10, we hand them a copied piece of paper that's on letterhead that says, "Thank you, Bob Smith, for your $10." We do that. And if this becomes a giant pain in the, then we'll change the rules.
Yep.
If it's restricted, then it has to come here, and it should be 5,000, 10,000, or 25,000. I don't care what it is.
That makes sense. There's no administrative burden on taking unrestricted money. It's just going to come in to the general fund. No detailed work is necessary. It's only when it's restricted for a specific purpose that we have to track it separately.
If somebody comes in and it's not a restricted, it's not a restricted fund, but they want to give you, let's say, $400, but they want it, they want the tax, the privileged tax, the tax advantage of it, you have to give them a specific form.
We're going to give them the form that says, "Thank you for your, thank you, Bob Smith, for your $400," with the date on it. When they come in and they bring us 62 office chairs, we say, "Thank you, Bob Smith, for your 62 office chairs," with the date on it, and we hand them the thing. Done.
So the difference between office chairs and money?
Well...
I have a form I have to give them. If you want to use this instead of the 501(c)(3) mechanism, you have to adhere to this. And there is a form. And so it's...
I think what customer papers suggesting is a different form for just unrestricted cash receipts. We're just filling the blank for the amount.
And that's easy for cash, but if we're talking about people dropping off a gift basket and then they now they want a receipt for that, that's going to have to be, we don't do that. It's going to have to be cash donations only.
If people are going to drop off a chair, if they're going to drop off a gift basket, whatever that is, and they're prepared to go play with their attorneys over that, because that's going to be ridiculous. They're going to get beaten to death over that, is you cannot rely on staff to determine what's the value of that item and should that be, "Oh, this is Swiss chocolate, so now it's worth $400?" We have no idea. So you just say, "Thank you for the item. Here's your piece of paper. And if we want, we can, and you guys can determine whether we're going to write in, 'Thanks for the gift basket,' and let them do whatever the heck they're going to do with it." We can't. If we have to start guessing at its values, so you guys really, when you're working on this, need to do almost a little bit of role play of what this city's capable of, because this city's capable of some crazy stuff being dropped off.
Yeah, and I guess it has to be a gift to the city as opposed to just, they want to just drop something off. And that's a problem. If it's, if it's non-military items as opposed to, you know, just cash.
I think I'd kind of like to wrap, wrap this up. I'd like to give direction that staff's heard some of this discussion that we've had tonight, to see what recommendations that you have to come back with, an example or two of some specifics, so that we're not going all over the place on this. I would suggest that my fellow council members read all the information that's in here so that they understand what's required for this. Maybe it's going to be something we don't want to do. I think it's very beneficial. There's a lot of other cities do it. It's not that hard to do.
This is what PVE is doing, right?
No. No, but, no. Everybody else here is doing, either has a 501(c)(3). But other cities, large cities, do this. And there isn't any reason that we can't avail ourselves of it if we can get our act together and agree to something, realizing that we have to follow the IRS.
I would think that, as you mentioned, other cities are doing this, so they have a policy that we can...
Yes, yes. But different, I'm sure that was looked at when they developed this draft, and we can continue to look at that some more. So can we give...
Yes, Madam Mayor.
So I would like, will somebody make a recommendation in this?
Make a motion we receive and file?
And give direction to staff?
Would you give them direction? I mean, they don't...
Okay. In favor? Aye.
Aye.
Are we going to close? Thank you. Sorry it took so long.
Do you mind if we take, hey, John, when we do the, back to the thing, let's go 10B? Because there's only 10 here.
Yep.
And then we'll go to 10A after.
I'm fine with that.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
So switch them. Ken's starting to stare at the wall. I'm starting to worry.
So this will be item 10B, zoning case number 23056, site plan review for grading and variance to retain grading import for property located at 29 Middle Ridge Lane South and finding the project categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act.
Madam Mayor, members of the city council, this item is for a project at 29 Middle Ridge Lane South, zoning case number 23-056 for site plan review and a variance. The subject location is located in city of Rolling Hills on the northern part, as shown on the, that star. And this is a close-up of the subject property with a 1,000-foot radius. Residents or owners of properties within 1,000 feet of the subject property were given notice of the planning commission public hearing. This is the vicinity map showing the subject property and surrounding properties around there. And you can see, the closest residence here is the one to the north, which is 237 feet away, roughly. To the east, you have properties about 342 feet away. And then from the south and west, you have properties 492 feet. And on the other side of LA County, this is the border right there, you have properties that are over 70 feet away from the subject property. Just so background, on this property, back in 1996, an application for an addition and a stable to partially encroach into the front yard setback was submitted under zoning case number 544. The planning commission approved that project, adopting resolution number 96-20. And that project was for a 1,200-square-foot residential addition and a 3,200-square-foot stable. Extensions to that project were granted in 1997 and 2000. And in 2000, city council adopted resolution number 889, upholding the planning commission's approval. In 2001, there was a extension of time granted by the planning commission for the stable. However, it was not built at that time. In 2011, a new application for a stable and corral was received under zoning case number 797. Planning commission adopted resolution number 2011-02, and the stable was built about the following year, in 2012. In September 2022, the city received a complaint that dump trucks were driving on Middle Ridge Lane South. And that brings us to the project before you tonight. We discovered the destination was identified as 29 Middle Ridge Lane South. A notice of violation was issued that the import and storage of dirt was a code violation. And on April 24, 2023, the owner submitted an application for zoning case number 23-056. It included the variance for the import of dirt and a site planner view for the grading. On April 16, 2024, the planning commission conducted the field trip and evening meeting, and they adopted resolution number 2024-07, approving the project. That's included as part of the staff report. They also included a condition, condition AE amending, which was amended to read at the very end, "That minor adjustments to the project regarding grading or soil retention may be approved by staff." And that's just anticipation that there may be changes once this gets to the building stage, that there may be additional dirt needed in order to clear up some of the area that had eroded away. So the summary of the approvals needed includes a site planner view to allow the grading, 638 cubic yards of fill, and affecting a surface area of 5,848 square feet. The height of that graded area is about three feet, according to the project engineer. And there's also a variance to allow the import of dirt. 638 cubic yards, according to our code, you can only, you're not allowed to import any dirt on the property. You're supposed to balance dirt on the property when you're doing grading. And so just to summarize, the planning commission's decision back on April 16 of this year, planning commissions, they discussed about the commission's authority to review the site plan review and the variance. And really, that's really what they're looking at. Basically, the ability to haul the dirt to the property and retain the dirt on the property without having to move it out. Any of the technical plans or reports will be reviewed by the grading plan checker in the building stage. There are some procedures provided by the grading plan checker outlined as part of the staff report. Those are found on pages 105 and 106. The action that the planning commission took was to approve the project and leave the imported dirt rather than having, rather than denying the application and having the applicant haul the dirt away. Again, there's that condition that was included under AE, which allows staff to approve minor adjustments to the grading. There are three building pads on the property. Building pad number one is for the main residence, which is about 12,000 square feet, and there's no changes to that building pad. Building pad number two is for the stable, which is about 6,000 square feet. No changes are being made to that building pad. The project is in regards to pad number three, which is the lower pad, and that affects about 5,848 square feet. It only includes grading alone, and that 5,800 square feet is roughly the limits of grading shown on the plan. There is no development proposed at all on that pad. It's really just moving dirt into that area. In terms of the pad coverage, disturbance in grading, the lot coverage, which includes structural and the flatwork, is about 12,429 square feet, or 11.5%, which is under the 35% maximum permitted. In terms of site disturbance, the existing is roughly 34%. The project is adding about 1.9% of disturbance to the property for a total of about 39.8%, which is still under the 40% maximum permitted. And again, grading is at 638 cubic yards of import. This shows the subject property. The property lines are shown there in the yellow-orange colors. The limits of grading for the affected property for this proposed project are right there in that area, in the northwest corner. From Middle Ridge, you have to go, you have to go down this driveway and stable, and then this dirt path that leads down further to the, to the graded area. This is a close-up of that area. Again, the affected area being in that area there, shown in red. It does slope down towards the top of that property to the west, and there is a trail and a, there's a trail and an area there for drainage, natural drainage course. These are a couple of photos of the subject property taken in September of 2022. The top shows the lower pad at 29 Middle Ridge Lane South looking north, and the bottom shows the same pad looking south. Across the way, you can see the Storm Hill Properties there and Storm Park located at the very corner. And these are some aerial photos. The one on the left shows 2023, about the time when we discovered the work being done. There were storms in early 2023 that caused some of the erosion that you see over there that carried dirt from the subject location down to the trail. And in comparison, on the right, you have the aerial showing the subject property back in 2019. And this is just another angle of the same area. The left is 2023, showing what it looked like earlier in the year. And on the right, you have the site as it appeared back in 2019. In terms of community communications, the project began as a code enforcement case reported by residents. The concern really was trucks going up and down Middle Ridge and speeding down that street. And so we did some investigative work, and that's when we discovered where the destination was going to. The public hearing for the planning commission was published in the Daily Breeze on April 5, and the notice was also sent to residents within 1,000 feet of the subject property. The issues of concern include grading calculations, as shown on the plan, and if they were actually accurate or if more grading is needed. And as shown in the pictures, some of that had actually washed away due to the storms. And so it's quite possible more dirt is needed to be able to flatten out those areas. Again, this started out of the code enforcement case, and so receiving some of the information for the as-built grading was difficult because it was already, dirt had already been moved onto that, the project site. We had reached out to certain agencies, including California Department of Fish and Wildlife, and also the Rolling Hills Community Association. There were also issues of recompaction because when we first went out there in early 2023, it seemed like the dirt, or actually late 2022, the area was really soft and the dirt was sort of powderish. So we can tell it wasn't compacted. We also had the engineer from Building and Safety go out and take a look. And again, the recommendations are included in the staff report in terms of what needs to be done in order to get a grading permit. In terms of the environmental review, under the California Environmental Quality Act, we find that the project is categorically exempt, subject to section 15304, class four, for minor alterations to land. And there's also no exceptions to the exemptions would apply. And our recommendation is that the city council receive and file the planning commission's action to adopt resolution number 2024-07, approving the project. And that concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Any questions for John?
Yes. There's a report from the associate civil engineer from, looks like Building and Safety, Anthony Wong, but this has been from July of 2023. And it talks about an investigation report for the licensed civil soils engineer and doing tests to determine whether the soil was contaminated, and if so, needing to be removed. Is this something that was done at all, or is this something that would happen if the project's approved?
No, it's something that would happen when a project is approved. And actually, the beginning part of that, of that email, it's really to stabilize the work that had already been done. And then after that, once everything had been approved, that bottom portion really talks about additional information to, for minimum compliance requirements. It talks about getting a licensed civil soils engineer required to prepare an investigative report, and I guess the steps needed in order to obtain a grading permit. So that part has not been done yet. Once it gets cleared by you, it's already been approved by the planning commission. If you accept the planning commission's decision, the applicant can continue on to Building and Safety and submit for the grading plan check. They would review the materials, any calculations being done. And, you know, they have the engineers and expertise in order to review the technical calculations and the grading plan.
And you mentioned that fish and wildlife were contacted with respect to this project and that there had been some wash off, it appeared, from the rain, the lot of rains that we had because it wasn't compacted. Did they have a report or do an investigation? Because I know we've had issues in the past before where they claimed there were things that could have been contaminated into blue line streams and things of that nature. Was that done?
Yes, so we met with staff from Fish and Wildlife, along with staff from RHCA. We walked the site. We actually went down to the trail and walked that area. And they were able to determine that, I guess, the erosion that happened was, it went onto the trail, which is managed by RHCA, but it did not, it wasn't able to get to the natural storm drain down below. And so they basically closed the case. They didn't have any issues with fish and wildlife. But we basically aired on the side of caution in contacting them because we knew that there's some drainage there, and we wanted to make sure that, you know, we do our due diligence and we don't get in trouble for not contacting them. So we had them come out and take a look.
All right. And lastly, you mentioned that the 638 cubic yards that was imported was deemed by the planning commission to be something that fell within the small adjustments that an applicant can do, that can be approved over the counter by the staff?
No, yeah, well, the actual work can't be approved by staff because it requires a variance. We don't allow any import of dirt. This is, again, a code enforcement case, and it's gone over for, it's been over a year. And during the rains, some of that dirt has eroded away. And so we sort of anticipate they're going to have to... And so we sort of anticipate they're, they're gonna have to bring in some more dirt in order to fill in those areas and recompact and do the work properly. And so we feel that once this gets to the plant check stage, the, the engineer will take a look at it and determine if there is additional dirt being needed, or if it can just be flattened out and leveled out, if at all. But in order to avoid having to go back to the planning commission and redo the, the whole variance, they gave us some leeway in order to, you know, do some minor modifications or, if necessary, in case, you know, additional dirt is needed.
So that would be something that falls under if there's need for more dirt and because of recompaction that didn't take place earlier?
Right, yeah, in order for them to do the, the, I guess, job correctly, you know, per plan, it gives us some leeway to, you know, make some adjustments there in terms of the grading counts.
And was there any other repercussions, other than there's going to be, Building and Safety are going to be looking at this and determining the, what the soil consists of, and if it's contaminated, whatever remedial things they would suggest? Other than that, was there anything, consequences that happened because of this being done without getting prior, prior approval from the city?
Well, it's anticipated when it gets to, to grading and drainage, they are gonna want to see some landscaping. You can see on the pictures, in, in, previously, there was landscaping there, and that landscaping helps to hold down the ground, so, to prevent further erosion. When we went back out there in April with the planning commission, we can tell there's a lot of new vegetation that grew back, you know, due to the rains. So a lot of vegetation's already kind of holding that soil in place, but we anticipate there may be additional vegetation needed, especially on the slope, in order to, you know, make sure that there's no further erosion.
And then, and then just to add, Madam Mayor, if I may, so, like any code enforcement case, the city staff's ultimate goal is compliance. We, we are not out there to be punitive, we are out there to make sure it gets fixed, it gets remediated. I do believe there was a notice of violation issued. I'll defer to, to John to, but based off of my understanding of it, that notice of violation was responded to, applications were, were kind of submitted, and, and, and the ball got rolling, so to speak. That's, you know, that's, that's, I, I made it sound like it, that's a good result. Oftentimes, we hear nothing or, or get told, hey, you know, go kick rocks, et cetera. So the fact that this property owner was responsive, and you're right, obviously did some stuff without the proper permits, but still nevertheless applied. Once again, the goal is ultimately compliance, not be draconian, not be punitive.
Matt?
Yeah, could you go back, it was much earlier in the, the presentation, there was a, you did the percentage, percentage of disturbance or something like that, and I was looking at the numbers, they didn't seem to add though.
They don't.
Thirty-four point four and 1.9 equals 39.8?
Well, the 37 and the 5 add up to 42. So it's just a lot of not...
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
It's, it's still under the maximum, but it's not, not as close as it looks like on this, at least in my, doing math in my head, more like 36%, just over 36.
Well, if the percentages are right, if the square footage is right, if the square footage is right, then, then the bottom number's right.
Yeah.
But either, either way, you're under the number, it's just one of them, it's, yeah.
Yeah, you're right, you're, you're correct, yeah, there's a little bit discrepancy.
And before this, you made some, I heard you say this, I don't know if it was a slip, but you said before the building phase, but you then said there were, there's no, there's no request for building, this is just simply for grading, right?
Correct, there, yeah, this is just for grading, there's no plans, the owner has no plans for development on, at this location.
That's it.
Any other questions? I would just make note that I attended both the site visit and the planning commission meeting in the evening, hearing no other questions. I have any comments from the public on this? Mr. Johnson?
Hi, Kent Johnson, 29, Middle Ridge Lane. This is my project, and I just feel like I need to give you a little bit more background and so forth. We moved in in 1992, and in terms of lot coverages and disturbances, everything else, 100% of this lot has been disturbed since we've been there. In 96, I believe it was, we got approval to move roughly 60,000 cubic yards of dirt. This, this property was a hill, and that's, and it had exactly three and a half acres with 100 square feet of flat area. We, through approvals and everything else, moved the hill that was in the front and put it in the back. And at that time, we had all of the, the things investigated and so on and so forth. Everything was done per code, I'm getting to a point here, and at that time, the canyon behind our house was evaluated by the environmental people and all that kind of stuff. It was all done, all of our draining, drainage is through subterranean pipes and so forth that end in the diffuser thing, background. A couple of years ago, whenever it was, I went to this, to the association, said I needed some dirt for, you know, I wanted to reinforce the berm that's down on the, the private, the pad we're talking about, and they gave me the name of contractor who was digging a basement. I contacted him, that's how the dirt started coming there. I got, quite frankly, more than I bargained for, but it's my fault, I didn't stop, I was, no excuse, but when he was bringing most of the dirt, I was gone Monday through Friday up at Cedars dealing with a medical issue with my brother-in-law. And, you know, I'd come home and it's there. The dirt that was placed is not for building or anything else, it's not a building, it's merely a pasture. It was compacted in place, not certified, compacted in place. When John and, and the group came and said, you know, you're not doing this, I stopped. I did ask permission, got refused, which is okay, to finish the berm, which would take in a couple hours. When the rains came, the reason the erosion occurred is because the water hit the, it used to, when I had the prior berm and so forth, the water stays on the, on the pad and it soaks in and recharges the water. I didn't have a lip on it when we stopped, and that's what caused the erosion. But yes, I did bring in the dirt. The wildlife and people did come out. It is an epimerle stream, which by definition, for those who don't know, is a stream that only has water in it during a participation event, and it's not controlled by wildlife and fisheries. But they came and they made the determination, as John said, that, you know, no harm, no foul. A lot of the dirt did, as he said, go on the trail. We took our machine down there and graded it back in place. So that's just a bit of a background. The other two things that, and I'm not looking for excuses here, but the fire, it, it's merely a pasture. The fire department liked what we were doing, you know, because it provides an access for them to get their pumper trucks close to the trail. That's not an excuse or anything. But the two things that are also cited for in terms of violations was illegal storage of a canoe that was under a tree, actually for a friend of mine. There is no provisions or ordinances that I can see where there's, that's a violation, point number one. I don't know how we're gonna resolve that. And then the fire, illegal storage of firewood, because we had a pile of firewood down there. It used to be next to the house, and when the fire guys come every June, they said, we'd like you to move that fire fuel from there down to there. Right now, for the last two years, I've been sitting in my pickup truck looking for an authorized place to store it, which I believe is where it was before. But that's not an issue for here, we'll, I'll deal with the city and we'll get those resolved. But they're not violations that I can see. But anyway, that's the history on, on, on the dirt. It's been there, it's compacted. I hope, working with the county, which I'm happy to do, that we can leave it in place and not pull it up and recompact it, because there's no need to do that. But if you have any other questions, I'm certainly here to answer them. I just would like to say, I was not doing this on the cloak of darkness, and as soon as you see something that's going on for any residents, knock on the door. You don't have to, you know, go and do a lot of, you know, detective work, because I stopped as soon as they did, and I, that's, that's how that dirt got there, and that's what it's there for. So any other questions? I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Kent, any?
Thank you, Kent. I'm glad to hear it was in the city at least that you got the dirt from.
Yeah.
As opposed to some other source, you know, where they had some contamination or whatever.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing now, how close public comment? Which is the council?
The motion of receiver files.
All favor?
Aye.
Unopposed? Thank you very much. Okay, the next item, I am going to have to refuse myself. I know that's a surprise because it wasn't shown on here, but Mr. Mayor Protem, if you will do 10A, 10A please?
Yes, ma'am. I'll do, I'll try to live up to your standards.
I refuse because I will live at the distance of the property.
Commission item zoning case 23-150, site plan review, instruction of additional to the existing residence and stable greater than 999 square feet, including a new basement, a swimming pool, outdoor kitchen, retaining walls covered, decks, porches, grading, hardscape of variance for construction in the front and rear setback of the property that's located at 2 Possum Ridge Road, and the finding of projects are categorically exempt from sequoia.
Good evening, Kent Johnson, I'm gonna give the, the presentation. Yes, this project, property is located at 2 Possum Ridge Road. There is a site plan review and a variance associated. Originally, it included the conditional use permit, but then the applicant pulled that off for the meantime. The subject property is located on the center part of the city of Rolling Hills, the corner of Portuguese Bend and Crest Road. This is a close-up of the subject property, and that's shown in the yellow. The blue area there shows properties within 1,000 feet, and those are properties that were notified of the public hearing before the planning commission. You can see that the subject property does touch Portuguese Bend Road on the eastern side. On the southern side, you have Crest Road West, and you can see Possum Ridge traversing the subject property right down the middle. So it divides, divides it into two parts. This is a close-up of this subject property. Again, the, the Possum Ridge going right through the middle of the property, and Crest Road on the south, Portuguese Bend Road on the east. In terms of distance, the subject property is located about 290 feet from the residence to the north, about 630 feet from the residence to the east, and 255 and 260 feet from properties to the south. And to the west, you have a property that's about 265 feet away. The site is zoned RES2. The net lot, lot area of the subject property is 3.5 acres, 151,000 square feet roughly. The existing residence was constructed in 1949. Additions and other structures were built in later years with significant improvements done in 19, in the 1970s. Currently, the property is developed with eight buildings and a generator. And so just to give you a little bit more background on the development on the property, there's currently a main residence there, which is about 3,660 square feet. Originally, there was 1,700 square feet, according to the building records, built in 1949. It included an attached garage and a 900 square foot, 900 square feet of open porches. There was extensions done to the main residence back in 1975 and 1978, and the detached garage was built in 1975. There's also another building on there, which they call a farm equipment garage shop, which is 884 square feet, which is according to building records, was built in 1975. There's a stable with a loft, which is permitted for 1,890 square feet, built in 1994, and two detached storage sheds, one built in 1954, which is 120 square feet, and another one in 1975, which is 300 square feet, used as a hobby room. There's also an enclosed condominium, which is 225 square feet, as seen from Crest Road and Possum Ridge, and a transformer slash generator located behind the residence. In terms of the summary, summary of the approvals needed, the project requires a site plan review for development of the 2,570 square foot addition to the existing residence for a total of 6,230 square feet. There's also 980 square feet of attached covered porches, a 1,950 square foot basement divided into two sections. There's 640 square, square foot attached garage, and so the overall total of the residence will be 9,800 square feet. The height is 18 feet 9 inches. There's also a 1,200 square foot swimming pool located, proposed behind the residence, 170 square foot outdoor kitchen, and a 335 square foot fire pit located near the swimming pool area. They are also looking to expand the driveway to add a motor court. The width of the driveway once you enter Possum Ridge Road is 20 feet. The motor court, which wraps around a landscaped tree area, is about 32 feet wide, and that tree plan area will be located in the middle of the, the motor court. There's also landscaping proposed, including some screening trees, a vineyard and an orchard. Originally, again, they, they were in with a conditional use permit in order to build a stable corral and sports court. However, that will be considered at a later time, and we're actually planning that part of the project, the phase two, to go back to planning commission, possibly as early as next month. But the proposed, proposed project for the additions to the residence and the swimming pool and other improvements do require variances. There are encroachments into the front and rear yard setbacks. The northern portion of the existing residence already encroaches in the front yard setback, which means any additions to that section would also require a variance to encroach. The swimming pool encroaches into the 50-foot rear yard setback, and the applicant claims that there are hardships due to the configuration of the lot, which is traversed by Possum Ridge Road, creating two sections on the property. This table shows what the planning commission considered when it reviewed the project. That, I guess, the second column there shows the existing development at the time. The third column was a previous application, which was proposed. They went back and revised that, removing the tennis court and the expansion to the barn. And so the revised project that was reviewed by the planning commission and eventually approved is shown there in that, that, I guess, the fourth column or second column from the right. The total of all development is located there in the right column. And so you can see in terms of grading, what they're planning to do is have 3,118 cubic yards of grading, of which 68 cubic yards will be exempt. It's an exempt because that's excavation for the swimming pool and our basement, which is allowed. In terms of the structural lot coverage, there's a 20, 20% maximum allowed with deductions, and what they have is about 8.3%, so the total of about 12,605 square feet of structures on the property, which includes all the, the buildings and other improvements. The flat work is all the concrete area, the walkways, the driveway and such, and so existing, there's about 4.6% of the property. They're adding about 5.7, which, if that adds up right, should be about 10% total. In terms of the total lot coverage, including the structural and flat work, you're allowed to have 35% maximum, and they're 18.6%. The disturb area, you're allowed to go 40% maximum, and they're at 31%, so they meet that requirement. And they also, these are guidelines for the building pad. There's a 30% maximum guideline there for the, the pad number one, it's 26.9%, and then they went ahead and deleted the sports court, which will be in, in a second phase. The colors there in green show, shows the comparison between, I guess, previous approval, the original approval, and the revised project that the planning commission looked at. In those cases, the ones in the green, the numbers actually improved or actually went down compared to what was originally proposed. The only time it went up was with the flat work. Originally, they were proposing about 6,000, 6,980 square feet of additional flat work, and then they increased that actually to 8,640 square feet. And that's because they wanted to have a larger concrete area next to the storage or equipment yard and the barn area. And I can show that a little bit later in the, the plan. Some of the issues of concerns raised at the March 22nd, 2024 Planning Commission meeting included the visibility of the tennis court located at the very corner of Portuguese Bend Road and Crest Road, the size of the stable and the height of the stable and the residence, the drainage flow, and also construction parking on Possum Ridge Road, which is a really narrow road. And so when this project went before the planning, planning commission originally, you can see that the red there shows the property lines. You have Possum Ridge Road, which divides the property into two sections. The applicant at the time was proposing that a tennis court be located on the eastern section, and they have an addition to the stable, making that a larger stable on the southwestern corner. The green areas there shows the easement for Possum Ridge. There's also... There's also a small little easement there for Portuguese Bend Road. And on the south, you have Crest Road East. In terms of the setback areas, the front yard setback is determined from Possum Ridge Road on both sides, 50 feet. The rear yard setback is located in this section there and on the western sections, which is also 50 feet, and everything else is side yard setbacks. So the reason for the variance is because you do have sections that do encroach into the front yard. You have sections that encroach into the rear yard setback. And so originally, when it came before the planning commission, the planning commission did have concerns with the development, particularly with the location of the tennis court located on the eastern part of the property. And so the applicant went back, and they actually removed the tennis court from the project. They also removed the improvements to the stable. And so they wanted to focus on the residential portion there with the additions. They want to be able to move in as soon as possible and start the work on the improvements to this main residence. So again, in comparison, this is the original proposal with the tennis court there and additions to the stable, and they decided to do away with that and just focus for right now on the improvements to the residence along with the swimming pool and attaching all the structures together to have one continuous residence. In terms of the grading, this is the original grading plan that was proposed when they had the tennis court and the barn location. And in comparison, what the planning commission approved is this right here, just showing some grading there, which is fill in order to flatten out the northern part of the property, and some cut in this area there in order to have that, the driveway. This is that motor court that they're proposing. The center of that is going to be a tree well. It's about 32 feet wide in this section and about 20 feet wide at the entrance. And they did, that additional flat work was located in this area here. Instead of putting that addition, they wanted to add some additional pavement area in that location of the building. Also, one other thing that they changed was this garage. When they came in originally, they had decided to knock off that third garage stall because there's a distancing requirement of 35 feet from the stable. Now that they're no longer doing the addition to the stable, they decided to keep the existing garage there with the third car. There is a condition that's included in the planning commission approval because it is a little bit close to the stable still. It's roughly about 34 feet, and the requirement is 35 feet. So if they wanted to keep the way it is, they'd still have to knock off either a foot there or do something at the very corner of the stable. These are some elevations. One of the concerns that the neighbors had was the height of the residence. And again, this is about 18 feet nine inches. I think it's pretty typical of some of the residences in the area. It is one story. There was concerns because they are showing some windows over here that they wanted to put a loft up above, and we told them they couldn't do that. They can have some attic space and a drop-down ladder in order to access that attic space, but they can't have a staircase and a fully dedicated loft or second story on the residence. Another issue of concern dealt with this, the pool equipment vault located here. The top shows the plan, the bottom shows the section. They wanted to have the pool equipment between the swimming pool and the basement, and it would be attached to the basement, which, if you see it on plan, you can see that it actually extends outside of the footprint of the building. This is just another plan there. The plan on the left shows the floor plan on the first floor, and the plan on the right shows the basement that they're proposing. And they actually wanted to extend outside of the footprint. That blue line there and the red shows the outline of the proposed building. They wanted to extend that out. And so we did have issues of concerns with that, and they went back and revised that and removed that section. So there's no more extension out from that basement. The plan that was approved shows the pool equipment located in that area there next to the fire pit, outdoor kitchen area, closer to the swimming pool. There's also notes there, and you can't read them on this plan though, but it basically says that they're not going to put a staircase there to the attic. It's going to be one of those drop-down or pull-down ladders in order to access the attic. There's also a height restriction, ceiling height for the attic so that they can't make it a full living area up there. This shows a previous proposal where they were proposing to put the stable, put the additions to the stable, connect the stable to the shop building. And they also wanted to demolish a portion of the garage to meet that 35-foot requirement. This shows the new proposal that was approved by the planning commission, which showed that garage existing. It's going to remain as a three-car garage. And again, that portion that they wanted to conquer in was in this area. That's what increased the flat work. One of the things the planning commission will be considering pretty soon, once we have the plans in, would be the swap of the sports court and stable. This is not for your consideration right now, but we ran this by the planning commission to let them know that the plans the applicant had would be to put the tennis court at the location of the existing stable and then build a brand-new stable on the east side of Possum Ridge Road in this location. So this is something that the planning commission will consider at a future date. The applicant will have to silhouette the site and stake it, and will have to go through the whole review process over for a second phase. We did send notices or published notices and day debriefs on March 7th for the planning commission meeting. Notices were also sent to residents within a thousand feet. Some of the concerns that we received include the height of the stable and the residence, the drainage, and the construction parking. And in terms of the stable, that's going to be looked at at a future date when they come back with a stable. The residence, again, is 18 feet nine. The planning commission thought that was appropriate. In terms of the drainage, the natural drainage flow will be retained. There was concerns about drainage on Possum Ridge Road. And the way it's sloped, it's either going to drain one side or the other, so it's not going to be draining down the street. The planning commission did include a condition for construction parking, prohibiting any type of construction parking along Possum Ridge Road because it is so narrow. And in terms of the environmental review, the project is categorically exempt under Section 15303, Class 3 of the California Environmental Quality Act guidelines. It's a project for new construction of a single-family residence and accessory structures. And the planning commission's decision, again, was to adopt Resolution Number 2024-05, approving the residential additions and other improvements such as the swimming pool. The conditions that were included in the resolution included that a portion of the stable of the residence must be, or the residence must be demolished to meet the 35-foot separation requirement from a stable. There's a condition there that no parking of construction vehicles be allowed on Possum Ridge Road. And the planning commission did have concerns about landscaping, particularly along Crest Road West that would block any trees in that location. And so there is a requirement for a landscape plan that needs to be reviewed. And with that, our recommendation is that the city council receive and file the planning commission's actions, and I am available for any questions.
Any other questions?
So on page 41, it says, "Issues raised at March 19th meeting," and there's, looking from the bottom up, it says, "Construction parking." You just said that they're not going to allow, that parking won't be allowed on Possum Ridge. But when I see something like, "The intent is," to me, that's not very, it's not conclusive. Like, there's still some possibility that it's an intention, it's not a requirement. But I'm also a little concerned about parking on Crest. Did anybody raise that concern? I mean, Crest is a very active walking path for a lot of people, and I don't know what it would look like. I don't know how many cars or trucks, but apparently there's no, that issue wasn't raised?
Yeah, the actual condition is on page 58, and it reads, "There shall be no parking of vehicles used for construction on Possum Ridge Road."
That seems to be in conflict with the term "the intent is." It's like, well, which is it, the intent or is it the requirement? More a comment, but I do have concern about parking on Crest. I would vote against this because of that, Crest, but just surprised that that didn't come up.
I guess the concern was because how narrow Possum Ridge Road is, they didn't want any parking there.
Totally get that. You're saying not on Possum Ridge, but it's either on-site or on Crest. Well, I think you know where they're going to go. They're going to park on Crest because they're not going to park on Possum, Possum Ridge, and probably not going to park on-site either. Also, I'm confused about, just above that says, "Height of the stable and residence." And it says, "The height of the residence was approved in 1974 but was never constructed." I don't understand that statement because clearly there was, residence was constructed. What does that mean?
Yeah, so that's something that we got from the applicant as well. And they mentioned that in 1974, there was a plan for the residence, but that part was never constructed and then allowed for pretty much what they're proposing now, an 18-foot-high, nine-inch residence.
Okay, I'm even more confused now. Can you just explain to me what it means by the height of the residence was approved in 1974 but was never constructed? Because...
Yeah, well, there was a project that was approved back in 1974, and they decided not to go, not to develop those plans, showing a higher plan. We don't have the plans for that 1974, you know, project. RHCA may have those plans. That's probably how the applicant was able to look at those plans, to determine the height. But in terms of the, you know, we didn't find it out of place because there are a lot of homes and residences, a lot of residences in our city that are 18 feet high.
Okay, and the first one in that section, "Visibility of recreational game court." So we're not, this isn't for our consideration right now, correct?
I'll come back for a phase two.
Because this one here, I could see, it says, "Visibility of recreational game court should be reduced once it is moved." But again, those, "should be intent," those are words or phrases that just don't work real well for me. But really, what I wanted to ask about was, and it seems like every time a project comes up, I really harp on this, and attention is paid, but it doesn't seem like anything ever happens. And that is on page 38, Resident Concerns. And I believe we're going to be talking about more of this later in the meeting tonight, and that is the middle of that paragraph. It says, "Drainage will be reviewed by building safety, but the proposed project will not substantially change existing drainage patterns." And my comment has been for a while now, and I think it's a valid concern with, let's just call it land movement, that we rely on building safety to do this without any public visibility or without visibility, without any public input. And, you know, as residents and even council members, we don't know what building safety does. They presumably approve the drainage plans, but how would we ever know? It's not visible to us. The results are not shared or broadcast. And, you know, we had public comments tonight about that, about drainage. You know, where's this water going? What is it doing? And it's like, no, that's building safety. We don't get involved in that. I've heard that countless times. We're not the experts. Well, we're not exactly experts in building. I mean, we have some accumulated knowledge, certainly, but we're not, we're not, none of us are engineers or contractors. So to just say, "Well, we're not experts," and let it go at that, I think is irresponsible. Again, I'm not going to not vote for the project because of that, but I keep bringing this up. And now we're actually getting comments from the public about this, and I think we should be paying more attention to this. I think there should be more visibility and more, not scrutiny, but reporting. What did, what did building safety ultimately do?
I mean, one of their reviews is to look to see if the drainage pattern changes with the project. And so if it's flowing in a certain direction, they want to make sure that it continues to flow in that direction.
But we never hear the results, is what I'm saying. So building safety makes the decision, you know, makes, puts a condition on it, and it's just, it's just completely silent to us. We never hear. And if there is an issue and they require, you know, a change or a condition, we don't hear that either. There's no, you know, back in the old days, I guess, when there was less of a land movement issue, I guess this was less important. But, you know, we're talking about, the last couple meetings, we've been talking about projects on fairly large pieces of property that have the potential to impact water flow. And, you know, people down the hill from us are noticing this as well. Whether it's legitimate or not, I'm not commenting on that. But, I mean, they're, they're looking up the hill and saying, "Hey, what are you guys doing about water management?" And so individual projects aren't being, I'm sure they're being scrutinized, but there's no, there's no knowledge of what happens behind the scenes on this stuff. So I'm going to keep bringing it up, and I would really like to see some response to this.
There are new requirements under the state, and that includes low-impact development where water is not supposed to be, you know, run off the property. It's supposed to be retained on the property, you know, to the scent feasible. So, you know, creating like, you know, bio swells or, you know, detention basins where water doesn't flow off, but it's retained on-site and, you know, allowed to, you know, go onto the ground over time rather than, you know, all at once.
But how do we ever find, how do we ever...
Saying is, he hears all that. But it gets to a point where it passes on to building and safety, and all communication is cut off from the council at this time. So the follow-through, the follow-up to say, "At this meeting, we discussed drainage for this property. As a result, the Building and Safety Division conducted the following. The following assessment was completed or established." So there's, it's that, what happens once it goes into building and safety? So that's something that we can, we can talk about in, you know, within staff and see if there is a way in which we can at least do a, conduct a follow-up. We'll find a way to bring it back so we can address that concern.
I understand that the project is already approved, it's moving on. But, you know, not to know what actually happened, you know, at some other level.
And that is a late, that's a component later on in the, in the construction phase as well, where things may end up deviating from what we initially had thought. I said there could be something that happens after it's approved, and they're in the middle of construction, that we don't know what happens at that point, if there's any additional changes. So I understand where you're, what you're asking, and I will work with John and our team to see what we can do at that point.
I have several questions also. You kept referring to net lot, net lot. Is that the same as gross lot size on this one? Because it's a terrible lot, a lot of wasted space.
Yeah, no, they're different. The gross lot is really for property line to property line.
So what was the gross lot? You kept saying it's three and a half acres net. Because it's a big spot, and I mean, honestly, it's a big lot.
They lose 150 feet straight down the middle.
Everywhere, and on all the sides. So I can see how they need to get into all the things. Because I was kind of wondering, the next question was also the building height. Don't we, John, routinely allow 22-foot peaks?
Well, my understanding, I mean, our code says that you're allowed to have one story. You're only allowed to have one story. You can have a loft to, you know, a residence.
Were they, because that house, their grade is significantly lower than the grade at Crest. And so 18-foot versus 22-foot wouldn't matter. And they weren't required to keep it lower than they wanted, were they?
No, they were, the planning commission approved them.
Their initial plan was 18. They did not want to do 20 or 22, and they were forced to put it down.
Right. Yeah, yeah, they weren't forced to put it down. The planning commission approved what they proposed.
Because I don't think that we limit at 18. And then my third question is, now, this might be a rule, but it's not a good rule. Basements are not allowed to project out beyond the footprint of the home? They should be, because why do we care if it's underground? Then people get more square footage, and we don't have to look at it. I mean, what we care about is what it's at grade that we can see. And if the footprint of the basement goes beyond the footprint, if it's under your lawn, who cares?
Yeah, and for one, it sets a precedence because we have another project where they have a, like a tunnel going to the basement.
Fine. Why would that, why would I care?
It's being considered by the planners right now.
We need to bring that up because that's something to be changed.
The problem is...
For this moment in time, it's a rule. Because I was thinking the same thing. Them putting the pool equipment where they wanted to put it was the perfect place to put it.
Correct.
And instead, the pool equipment got moved up on top, which is not the greatest place to put it.
And I would love it if people put car garages underground. So we didn't have to look at a three or six or 12-car garage. They could have it underground, and you wouldn't see it at all. I mean, I think we need to visit that as the planning...
I think the statement is...
We should, maybe put it on the planning commission... We should maybe put it on the planning commission when it's time for the planning commission to think of changing things. And we should make sure we understand the unintended consequences. Because I'm in a house that was the first house with windows and doors, and we followed all the rules.
Right.
And we looked like two stories on the backside. The house, yeah, and now we planted all the stuff and whatever. But unintended consequences, but I think it should be, we can put that on the list, because I was thinking the same thing, especially for the pool equipment, which would have been spectacular place to put it.
Well, I know you, the first one that had, that had a certain amount of light well.
Yes.
Which was a new thing, and it looked like two stories from one side. Now it's just fine. And now we're all accustomed to light wells, and they look just fine if they're done properly. But I think that if we get more usable square footage underground, we wouldn't have to, that would be great.
So let's do this.
Jim, do you have any questions regarding what's here with the rules we got of today?
I just wanted to make sure that they didn't have to lower their house for some stupid thing. And then I kinda wanted to know, how big is this lot? And they're getting shrunk way down because of all these different easements.
Yeah, so I can tell you, the lot, which includes the roadway easement, is four-point-two acres. That's a hundred and eighty-one, a hundred and eighty-one thousand, four hundred and twenty-nine square feet. And for development purposes, a net lot area, which excludes the roadway easements and ten feet around the property lines, is three-point-five acres. So you're going down from four-point-two to three-point-five. They're not even counting the setbacks in that. And the setbacks are massive, all the, I mean...
This is a nightmare lot. People should give them a bit of a break.
Yeah, I think, I think we did. Sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I wanted to ask, in terms of Councilmember Wilson's point, is there a way that we can ask for a drainage plan when they, we know that they're creating more impervious surfaces, to have that already in the plan where they have a plan?
That's not how it's done. When you, when we come, we don't do the drainage plans. When you do your house, you submit here for how it's gonna, it's gonna fit on the lot, square foot, the pad size, the coverage size, all that. Community Association does their aesthetics. We don't even do aesthetics. We, I don't know why we have to see all these elevations. We don't do elevations. So then, building and safety, after you've approved to do your thing, then you have to go to them. And it's true, now they want you to absorb your water onsite, which is amazing, because years ago, they wanted to be offsite. They wanted to go into the storm drains. They did a complete reversal, and it wasn't that long ago, which is amazing. So they will make you give a plan on how you're gonna absorb your water onsite. But this is, no one's gonna do that now before you even get your plan approved. Why would you go and spend a bunch of money with engineers and hydrologists and go to building safety? By the way, they don't even approve it until it's been approved by us anyway. So they're not even gonna do it. Building safety says, why would we go ahead and spend all this time and money on something you might not even approve? That's how it works. And that's why you gotta go stamped here, you gotta get stamped here, you gotta get stamped here. And that's why now we could ask them to come back and say, okay, where are you gonna put your seepage pit or your well or whatever? We could show us later, but no, it would not make any sense at all to an applicant to do it before the plan's been approved.
Besides the dollar problem, I think the bigger problem is, nobody in this room, nobody in this room is an expert on any of this stuff. And so if they say, do this, that, the fact that they're changing where the water goes, I think you're gonna see, there's another house that's coming down the road, that they're doing unbelievable things to deal with the water. And, but they're, they're super green people, they're doing all this, that they wanna reuse the water. It's amazing what they're doing. Now, whether we want to force people to start doing those things goes back to the planning commission problem. But my concern is, we're gonna approve this thing, then it goes to the experts. We might have a different opinion on what they're doing with the water, but everyone's just following the rules, and the rules keep changing. So that, I think that's where the, I think that's where the rub is right now.
Yeah, this was not intended to be like the whole drainage plan that one would have after approval, but just sort of a semblance of want to address Councilmember Wilson's issue that he was saying, I'd like to know what, what's going to happen with this drainage or whatever, just to have a general idea.
Even if you ask them, they won't do it.
They barely do, they barely do it when it's approved.
They won't do it until your plan's approved.
You know, I was simply trying to talk about that issue and see if there was any way that, that our, our planning director here had seen that in other projects, that's all. But I didn't get an answer from him about it.
Preliminary drainage on the drainage plan. A lot of times it'll have arrows, you know, showing, you know, the flow of drainage, you know, where it's going to.
But are they gonna be required to retain the water on this, at building safety?
The, I mean, they are subject to LID, low-impact development.
Isn't it eighty percent or eighty-five percent you're supposed to retain now? Is that what the rule is currently?
You're supposed to retain the water that develops on your land as a result of eighty-five percent of a hundred-year storm or something like that, or fifty-year storm, whatever it is.
Yeah, because they completely switched. They wanted you to put it all under the storm system. Now they want you to retain it all.
Well, I would submit that...
Which is amazing.
I don't think that's a really good policy in a land movement area.
I understand. And the fact that they completely switched means, do they really know?
Okay, hang on a second. Hold on. You two?
Okay, I'm down. I had that question, and John answered it finally, so that was good.
Okay, then here's my only question. On Middle Ridge, which has the same problem, and I don't think we do the road easement plus the two side easements on top of that, we changed Middle Ridge and some other place that has the same problem to thirty-foot setbacks instead of fifty-foot setbacks with an overlay zone. And my question, and I don't know why we ignored Possum Ridge, does the same thing all the way down. So...
But that's a separate issue. Yeah, we were trying to talk on the project.
I don't know, B, why you're trying to keep us on topic. So with all that said, okay, does anyone have nothing else? Okay, public comment, anyone have public comment? Jim, hold on.
Stay on topic.
I'm on top.
Me in charge.
Jim Michael, isn't it? First of all, they just got to approving one on Crest Road, on Crest Road East, next to West Level East property, the vacant lot, where they were required for them to put in catch bases for the water, two of them on the property. Required to be in their plans. Now, I don't know if they go to building safety, is they gonna change it or not, but they were required to do it before they could get it approved to build on it. It was in their plans, had to have it.
Okay.
So it does exist, you can require it. They may not be doing it for everybody else, but they were there because the people down below were complaining about the water coming down from all the concrete they're gonna put up there. So it, you can't make them do it, because they sure made the people in twenty, I don't know what the address is, but next to West Level East property, the big empty vacant lot. Yeah, they made them put in two catch bases for the water.
Eleven, Crest Road.
Anyway, I was just pointing out that it does exist if you wanna do it.
Anyone else have any public comments? Seeing none, I'm gonna close. Does anyone have? I'll second. You wanna do a roll call? I think we're gonna need to. Okay. Councilmember Wilson.
Yes.
Councilmember Black.
Yep.
Councilmember Derringer.
Yes.
And Mayor President Piper.
Yes.
I thought it would be two, two.
I didn't, I didn't know where that was going. Hey, Leah. Yeah, come back and save us. Boy. Oh, my God. Just moment. That's, can't fell asleep, so it's not...
All right, so we've done our commission items. I assume we must now be on matters from the City Council, fourteen A?
Madam Mayor, the item before you is consideration of resolution in support of the bipartisan homelessness, drug, sorry, drug addiction and theft reduction act, and this is twenty-three dash the law one-seventy-one, for targeted reforms to proposition forty-seven. This item was initially presented before City Council at the first council meeting in April. However, it was continued to this evening on May thirteenth, and the item was brought before us by Councilmember Derringer. Specifically, at the time when it was presented, we were requested, we were asking staff direction, sorry, council direction on draft, on approving a resolution in support of the homelessness, drug addiction, and theft reduction act initiative. At that time, they were collecting signatures. However, after the time it was just presented, they had announced that they had received over nine hundred signatures for this one ballot measure item. So the reason why we are here this evening is to discuss how this resolution would be in support of what the coalition is seeking at this time. I don't know if Councilwoman Derringer wanted to speak on the item in particular, but the material before you has a lot of the FAQs that was presented, as well as a PowerPoint presentation that was submitted on behalf of Councilwoman Derringer.
Yeah, and I'll just basically cut to the chase. This was drafted by the California District Attorney's Association. And in response, the legislature, who did not want to change Prop forty-seven, nor did the governor. And so the fact that this has so many signatures far and above what they needed to qualify has now moved the legislature more in terms of trying to do something more with the out-of-control fentanyl problem, the out-of-control retail theft problem. So essentially, it's trying to restore, not even going back to where we were before Prop forty-seven, but trying to restore more of the, of the ground rules that we had that kept people from just continually stealing from retail places, continually to sell fentanyl, which is killing tons of people. And so this is a very measured, but much-needed proposition. And the more cities that join on it, that gets, that becomes more of a problem for the legislature and forces them to do the right thing.
Can we just add the, add her name to a list of cities?
It's a resolution. It's a resolution. And that's the proposal that was put to all cities, and there's been a lot of cities that have done it. But I'm here to answer any questions, because I noticed that I work as a DA, can answer any specifics.
I think the fifty pages that you provided for us is efficient.
It's awfully wishy-washy. I hate that.
No questions?
Hearing none, any comments from the public? Hearing none, close the public comment. What are the wishes of the council?
I would move that the city support the initiative.
Can I take, can I just, before we, before you do that, I have a comment on page one-fifty-five. I'm sorry, I am happy to go ahead and support this. I believe that the existing legislation needs to be fixed. In the first sentence, where it says, while Prop forty-seven achieved notable success, I would change that to may have.
Yeah, that's fine.
Number one, and third from the bottom, whereas breaking the cycle of repeat offenders, blah, blah, blah. The homelessness, drug addiction act provides critical mental blah, blah, blah. I would take that out as well. I think that it reads just fine and makes our point without that.
Are we allowed to? If it's one that everybody's using the same name?
It's, yeah, it's a resolution that cities can...
Oh, okay, we can modify. Okay, I thought it was something we do silently, it was already done.
I'm totally fine with Leah shortening this thing and getting a little more pointed.
Yeah, I don't, you know.
You don't need to be soft.
I mean, yeah, this is balancing, because there are some people who are drug addicted and have mental health problems that steal. I mean, but, but again, they need consequences, and right now, they're not...
The first sentence, whereas drugs achieve notable success, get rid of that.
Yeah.
Props have led to unintended consequence over the past decade. Get rid of the first sentence.
I would, I'd be fine with that. Take away the whole...
If we're allowed to, that's great.
Well, I mean, you need to put something about it on it, because the next one talks about the unintended consequence.
Hold on a second, let's do this. I think we're okay supporting it, if everyone's okay with that, and I think Leah can write something, and we're...
No, no, this is fine. All I want, Jeff, just, because don't make me, because I won't write it as well as this. But I have a problem with...
I'm saying, you said, don't use it.
The first one.
Right.
And I agree with Jim, might as well just take that whole thing out.
Get rid of it.
And the...
Make sure it makes sense.
It makes sense. If you started off with, whereas unintended consequences of Prop forty-seven include, and go from there.
And could you repeat your second one, just so?
The, whereas breaking the cycle of repeat offenders, it's the fourth from the bottom. And the following one, whereas the homelessness, drug addiction, and theft reduction act provides critical mental health.
Remove those?
That would be my suggestion. I don't know if that's what the rest of the council would like.
And we'll bring this item back.
I'm totally good with getting, breaking the cycle.
Yeah.
I think we're perfectly, get rid of that. Who cares?
Would your motion accept this?
So you want to make a motion?
No, you made a motion to support the initiative and resolution. I'm just asking if your motion would include the amendments to the draft.
As a federal amendment, yes.
So that includes amendments to the draft, which includes eliminating the first paragraph or whatever it is, the first whereas. Get rid of the whereas, it says breaking the cycle of repeat offenders. I would probably even get rid of the whereas, the homeless drug, retail provides critical mental health.
Okay.
Yeah, those are the two that they had mentioned.
They're not important, they just...
All right, I'll second it.
That's, yeah, the paragraph ten, like, one, ten, and eleven, I have no...
Motion and a second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? No, thank you very much. Moving on to fifteen A, matters, excuse me, from staff. This is consideration of supporting retail theft legislation in the California Legislature that would strengthen public safety.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So this item actually kind of falls right on the heels of this previous discussion, as Councilmember Derringer just mentioned, with Prop forty-seven and AB one-on-one, and Prop fifty-seven, and things that have changed over the past decade or so as it relates to crime, we have seen a growing amount of organized retail theft and shoplifting over the years. And in recent years, even more so. Last week, the League of California Cities sent out a press release to all city managers and elected officials, basically asking for support regarding a variety of bills that are outlined in the staff report. And so each of these bills in here deals with theft, shoplifting, retail theft enforcement, organized retail theft, aggravation of retail theft and jurisdiction legislation, retail theft resale and stolen goods. So it's a compounding issue. They would love to have the support of cities. And so there are draft letters of support within the staff report. And this is really just a matter of discussion for you now as to whether you would like to weigh in as the city of Rolling Hills with letters of support.
And I had done a revision of AB twenty-nine forty-three, which is on page two-eleven of your packet, because the amendments that the League of California Cities adopted are the amendments I wrote. And they don't have, and the draft said, for the California League of Cities, said to, as included, as or as attached, but the attachment wasn't in our document. So that's, I have copies of that apparently. I have to, I have to hand them out during the meeting as opposed to...
See them filed for Councilmember Derringer's addition.
I had a question received, uh, Councilmember Derringer's addition.
So, so basically, it just...
I just need a vote on that.
We need a vote.
Possibly.
Okay, yes.
I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Do you need any extras?
So can I make a motion that the city of Rolling Hills supports the retail theft protection?
Sorry, sorry, we've gotta do pub, ask for public comment first. That's okay, no problem. And if we have any, any questions?
Well, my only question is, is there a long version of these things, like, that goes into detail? Like, I mean, we're, we so far are supporting the words in the title on the first one and the second one. I just wanna make sure on this, as well as things in the future, that we, that they're not like, kinda wishy-washy, whatever things, that we're really supporting something that, that matches, kinda...
that, that matches kind of who we are versus some, that this is great, this only goes a quarter of the way, and we're so excited.
That's true.
That's why I'm.
It only goes.
I'm with you. I know, it's, and usually Jim's the one who's against the ones that don't go far enough, and I'm just saying is, we're confident, you're the one that does all this, we're confident this is going in the right direction at least.
Yes, and that's the example I gave with this AB 29743, is that it wasn't really worth the papers printed on. They had all this great intent language, and because I did the legal research, I'm like, this is not going to work. You have to put these amendments in to say we're, we are making an exception to the existing case law, otherwise, you know, things of that nature. So that's why I did that, and it got adopted. But you're right, there is an issue up there where sometimes they just want to make it look good because they have to appease the, those are not quite so interested in this issue, so it can get out of committee and push it along. But, so that's why I insisted, like, no, we have to make it worth something. If you're going to say the intent, the language has to back it up. It cannot be just this intent and then.
Because that's, that's my fear on all this stuff is, you know, when you change the words on the previous one, no one's going to read it. They're going to like, Rolling Hills is for it or against it, and it's going to get in a pile. No one's going to be like, oh, they took this words out, and they took this words out because they're being firmer on these things. I think it's more of a scorecard. So that's just.
It is, but would you rather be on the side that wants to do something than the side that doesn't?
I have no problem doing something. I'm just wanting to make sure that we're not a prop.
Well, for what it's worth, I'll sign on to stuff that I don't, that I probably, I'll sign on to stuff that I draw a line someplace. I'll support the thing, but I don't want to say.
I'm, I'm fine with where you go.
This or that. On some of these, I've got one I'm not ready to go for. Any, any questions on any of these before I open for public comment? Hearing none? Any public comment on these issues? You're not being, you're not being, you're not being forced, Mr. Eichley.
I think anything's better than nothing, because things have gotten so liberal that the best thing you can do is anything. And if you don't take, if you can't get back something, and you're going to ask for it more than they're going to give you unless you can get it in a vote, I think you're better off to get something than nothing, because nothing is not working right now. I mean, even though we don't have any retail businesses, we all have to go out to retail businesses. And they're making it so, they've also passed laws where you can't take guns into any businesses anymore. And that's a thing for the Supreme Court. If it ever gets that far, because they keep stalling it. Anyway, anything's better than nothing, so if that gives us something, I think you ought to try to take it.
Any other public comment? Hearing none. I'll close public comment section. I have a couple comments, but anybody else want to go first on anything?
Well, I would just say, the only one that I don't think we should sign off on is the one that, it's on page 215. It's related to McCarty's bill and Irwin's bill. Like, seriously, just McCarty. No, it is Irwin's bill too. But McCarty's bill doesn't do anything. It has the same kind of language that, that I amended in Zebor's bill. And so, it's, it's.
Are you suggesting that this particular letter, the one on 215, that we eliminate that?
Yep.
I would agree with that. One of the ones that I was going to ask to have eliminated. Any others, Bee?
No, I think, I think for the AB 2943, I'd ask that we substitute the version that that, yes, that's fine.
And I want to thank you for all the work that you've done on this. And on page 207, I would like to delete that one.
207?
Kind of duplication and what she did for her previous changes that she made is, is better than this, and we don't need that.
And they're not, they're changing that at this point, so, yeah, so we.
So, 207, I don't think we need to do any more studies about what happened during COVID, so are we okay with eliminating that one? And again, this is being super picky, but since my name goes on the bottom of it, every one of these that starts out with "as you may know," I would like to strike "as you may know" off every single one. They find, the sentence reads just fine to start with, "Retail theft continues to be a problem." If they don't know it, they don't belong to be there.
So you just want to take that phrase off?
On, on all of them. Christian, is that okay? So on every single one that it starts with "as you may know."
Right.
The League of California Cities?
And I was trying to figure out a way to write on all of these ones where they talk about funding, funding, funding. I wanted to find something, figure out how I could say, no new funding, take the money, reallocating it from somewhere, but I thought.
They're an extreme budget deficit, so that's going to probably happen.
It's the only good thing I've seen that they, because of the extreme budget deficit, some of the things they've cut. I was so delighted. Okay, so, we're okay?
Yeah.
With that?
Yeah, it's good.
I know I went around, but is that direction to staff?
Yes.
For the minutes and everything? So, we have a motion to approve with the amendments, the little changes just made?
Including the, the whole substitution.
Right, the substitution and the striking of 207, and what was your page? B 215?
215.
215 or?
215.
Yeah, 215 and 207, and the substitution. Have a motion for that? All in favor? I'm sorry.
I didn't catch.
Your second.
Be a motion maker in.
In a second.
Well, I thought you were making that motion.
No, you have.
Okay, I'll make that motion, and then.
I'll second.
Somebody does it.
Who are you going to give it to, Dr. Black, or?
I give it to Dr. Black.
Yeah, he can keep it.
It's what happens when you sit next to the clerk.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Thank you very much for sticking out through the long thing, Ken.
I see civics in action.
There you go, there you go.
You didn't say it's mine.
Yes, you did.
We got closed session now?
Yeah, we're going to adjourn. Oh, do I have to ask a question about comments on closed session?
Nope. They could have done that.
9:38.
I have 9:38.
9:38. Yes, sir. All right, hang tight. Make sure we're.
Off-line, no longer live?
Where do we call this?
Madam Mayor, if I may give the closed session report. City Council recessed into closed session at 9:38 p.m. pursuant to the item listed on the agenda. The City Council then reconvened into open session at 10:50 p.m. and no reportable action was taken. That concludes my report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Hearing nothing else, I'd like to adjourn. Next regular meeting is Monday, June 10th at 7:00 p.m. Thank you.